Team Louisville City Council Meeting, I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzman. Because of COVID-19, this meeting is being held electronically and is being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment periods, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen. Attendees calling in can dial *9 on their phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmuted, please state your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you wish to speak on another topic, you'll need to raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzman?
Here.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you, everyone. Can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the agenda is approved. That takes us to public comments on items that are not on our agenda and items that appear on our consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to comment on an item that's not on our agenda, please raise your hand at this time. And I'll call on you, you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us, and please remember to tell us your name and your address. The first person is at the phone number ending in 927.
You're unmuted now, we should be able to hear you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Bell, and I reside at 685 South 104th Street in Lafayette. I'd like to speak as to the 104th Connector Trail. Thank you, Mayor Stolzman and councilmembers, for your service to the community and for allowing me to speak. As you know, Louisville is leading the path design and build of the 104th Connector Trail. Our home is in that area, and the preferred path, in its current form, is slated to go across our driveway and run along the west border of our property line. We do have concerns about how the path will impact the safety of our home and its overall impact in this area. We became aware of the project in 2019 and have communicated with Louisville and Boulder County staff on different occasions. There has never been specific information available to understand why this preferred route was selected over other options and why those other options were not viable. We would have appreciated more transparency in the conceptual design process. Nevertheless, it appears the planners have landed on a preferred path location. We are requesting a personal meeting with Stanley Consultants to provide input regarding the preliminary plan. Having owned this property since 2012, we are familiar with how the riders currently use the road and other safety and other issues that could be looked at. We believe that we can provide meaningful and helpful input. Like the council, we want a path that provides a safe trail experience that also addresses our safety and also the impacts to our property and the open space in the area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there any other members of the public that would care to comment on items that are not on our agenda? All right, seeing none, that would take us to our consent agenda, and just for folks listening, councilmembers don't reply to public comments that aren't on our agenda because they're not on our agenda, but we do follow up with folks after the meeting. So that takes us to our next agenda, which is agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Any motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion of the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, the motion carries. That takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. Are there any councilmember comments evening from folks? Seeing none, that takes us to our city manager's report.
Mayor, can you see and hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Louisville residents. I want to start this evening by saying it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Louisville the past 24 years, including four years as the city manager. I'm so proud to be part of this community and our collective success in building a resilient, vibrant, and sustainable economy and government that will support our residents for decades to come. As I look toward the future, I have decided to seek new challenges and will be leaving the city's employment. I have greatly enjoyed working with the city's terrific staff and our elected officials, all of you. I will continue to be part of the community and look forward to the many great achievements that lay ahead for the organization and the community. As I have discussed with you over the last few days, my last day with the city will be August 27th. The city of Louisville will always be in my heart. Thank you for a wonderful 24 years, and I wish everyone all the best. Thanks, I'm going to hand it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Balsor. On behalf of the entire community, I want to thank Heather for her years of dedication, her dedicated service and tremendous effort. Anyone who has had an opportunity to work with Heather knows the tireless energy she's poured into the community, and we really can't thank her enough. Mayor Proton Maloney and I will work with Deputy City Manager Megan Davis to bring back a process for the interim manager position and to fill the vacancy for the council to consider at a future council meeting. That takes us to our regular business this evening. Our first item of business is Agenda Item A, if you're following along in the packet. It's ordinance number 1809, Series 2021, an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Louisville Municipal Code to add a new chapter 1776 regarding inclusionary zoning. This is our second reading in public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if there are any announcements from councilmembers? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to Director Zuccaro for a staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council, Rob Zuccaro, Planning and Building Safety Director. I'm going to be presenting for staff this evening on this item. So this is the public hearing, so public notice was made for the hearing this evening, published in the Daily Camera and posted all required locations around the city for the ordinance amendment proposal. First item is I want to let everyone know that there was a revised ordinance provided to City Council this evening, so it was also provided to the public in the addendum for the meeting this evening. There were two changes to the ordinance. One was in Section 177630, which was to replace the word "section" with "chapter", just to clarify that, and this was the applicability language, that it applies at time of PUD, final plat, and so forth, so that that would be subject to the chapter, not the section, so the entire chapter requirements. So as a clarification, and then an amendment to Section 177640B, so this was related to provision of the inclusionary requirement through rental housing. There was language in there that would have not allowed the rental units to be built onsite or offsite. For clarification, we wanted to delete that. I think the intent, and I think the ordinance, as we intended, and would be better off if you can build the rental units onsite, and so we wanted to delete that language. So I can answer questions about that at the end or now, if you would like, as I go through the presentation. So just to get into the background, this is on the city council work plan, just to go back in time to the beginning of the year, because I think it's important to remember that we broke our affordable housing work program into two phases this year. The first was to consider this inclusionary ordinance, and then the second was to have a more thorough and broad discussion about other tools. So that's a second phase that we're anticipating later this year. There's a lot of additional tools that we can consider. You know, those could be commercial linkage fees, other incentives. We've talked a lot in the recent past about preservation of our manufactured home park and so forth. There's probably others that I'm not listing here, but that is anticipated to take place in August this year on our current agenda, so that will be a phase two of this affordable housing discussion. Little bit more background, in 2018, the city did take part in the development of and endorse the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnership Regional Housing Strategy. So that provides a long-term goal of 12% affordable housing countywide by 2035. So that would be, you know, building new housing, acquiring housing. There's a series of strategies that all of the local communities within the county and the county would need to adopt, to try to adopt to meet that goal. So I think this inclusionary ordinance is one way that we can consider to contribute to the regional housing strategy. When we're talking about affordable housing and inclusionary housing, some parameters that are very common, which we have in our ordinance, is you usually want to define what affordable housing means. That's typically done at about 30 or 33% of, or you make an assumption, excuse me, that a family would be able to, would be spending no more than 30 to 33% of their income on housing. So that's your starting point, and then what could somebody afford that might need affordable housing? So they're typically broken into different groups. 60% or lower of what we call area median income, or somewhere between 60 to 80%, that's often considered another group of affordable housing or middle-income housing, and then up to 120% is another grouping of affordable housing that's often considered. As you'll see in our ordinance, we're really focusing on the 60% and below, or 60 to 80% are the groupings that we've included in our inclusionary ordinance. So what's influencing affordable housing? The housing strategy mentions a lot of items, but I wanted to highlight a few. One is low inventory, new employment to new housing ratio. They note from 2007 to 2017 that there was a 3.5 jobs, there were 3.5 jobs for each new housing unit created during that timeframe. So average household size is usually between two and two and a half persons, so there's more employment than we have housing within the region, and that's influencing the affordable housing issue. And then housing transportation cost, as people are having to move further out, there is additional cost for transportation that influences overall affordability. There are several comprehensive plan policies that support affordable housing, I won't go into them, they're in the staff memo as well. So just to get into a summary of the proposed ordinance, so we're proposing a minimum of 12% of all new units that are developed in the city, so that's if they go through a final planned unit development or a final plat, that, that, 12% of those units would be affordable, and half of them would have to be, a minimum of half of them would have to be at 60% or below the AMI. The remainder could be 60 to 80% of AMI, so it could be a mix of 50/50, or all of them could be 60% or below, so it could work in a few different ways. So this could include rental or for-sale units, as I mentioned. There are alternative options provided in the ordinance in order to meet the requirement. So in addition to, say you're doing a housing development, actually providing that housing onsite, your other options are to pay a fee in lieu, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. You could also build additional housing offsite or acquire housing offsite of your development in an equal amount that you would have to provide onsite. You could also provide land dedication for future affordable housing development, add an equivalent value of what you would have to provide onsite, or another alternative agreement that the city council felt was at least as impactful as meeting our ordinance. So the city would be administering this program, or we would likely partner with others to do it as well over time. So that's something we'd have to explore if this is approved, is how we would administer, but ultimately the city would be responsible for administering. So a little bit on the fee and lieu. We looked at what the city of Longmont, the methodology that the city of Longmont employed for their fee and lieu, and we use the same methodology. It's called the Market Affordability Gap Approach, and at first reading, we actually used their same fees, which I have here on the slide. That was based on Longmont-specific data from, I believe, 2018. For second reading, we use, again, use the same methodology, but use the most current data for Louisville, and the calculation comes out a little higher than first reading, but here's what we've included for second reading based on that same methodology for for-sale or for-rent fee. We do provide a little bit more analysis in the staff memo, but I do want to mention some of these kind of pros and cons that we discussed in the staff memo. One of the pros often mentioned with an inclusionary housing ordinance is that it does promote a mix of housing types within a neighborhood itself, and that really helps to promote an integrated and inclusive community when each neighborhood has its own affordable housing included within the neighborhood. There is a lot of discussion about the economics of inclusionary housing. We did include some information in the packet, and an article specifically that talks about the economics of inclusionary. There's a lot, it's a pretty broad article, but it does suggest that in a strong housing market, it does not necessarily cause an increase to the market rate units. The reason is, is that, you know, when a developer is developing a project and they know there's an inclusionary ordinance, they will usually take that into account when they are negotiating for acquisition of the property and also maybe make some adjustments in the pro forma and their profit expectations. And really, when you're looking at the economics of the development, you can't really increase the cost of units within that development itself. You have to compete with all the other housing in the market. So you do have to find ways to absorb it within that land deal itself and the construction of the units, rather than spreading that cost within that close neighborhood itself. So the inclusionary, especially as we drafted it, we specifically require that affordable housing be of equal quality to the market rate units in the development, and certainly, as this, as we implement this over time, it will provide, you know, needed workforce housing for our community and, you know, help support that economic development within the community as well. Some of the cons that you sometimes hear about inclusionary housing is, yes?
If I could just ask you to pause one moment, it looks like Mayor Proton Maloney has a question on something that you're covering, right, as we're?
Absolutely.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my question was the previous, was the previous slide, I believe. If you could, if, Rob, yes, thank you very much, Rob. So in the second reading, the 924 and 472, so those are numbers based upon Louisville? Is that correct?
Yes, we looked, yes. It's based on Louisville rental and home sale data. It does compare to Boulder County-wide household income data, because we don't have Louisville-specific data.
Okay, and can you tell me the date of that? Is that the June 2020 data, or what?
So there, what, we do have the foot, let me pull that up. So within the packet itself, we included the calculation with several footnotes, so I'm going to pull that up quickly here.
Okay, thank you for the clarification on this, because, part of the reason why I'm asking this question is because I know the new assessments are done as of July 1st of 2020, but we've also seen a significant market increase since, and that's the, that's the clarification I'm looking for.
Sure, yeah, yeah, and Planner Ritchie's on the call as well, and she might be able to verify if there's a date, specific date associated with that county assessor data poll.
Sure, so yeah, Mayor and City Council, the data actually polled was the actual sales data, so it's not based on assessed value, it's sales value for all sales, and all sales in 2020 within Louisville, and then all sales through, I believe it was mid-May, there's a date on that exhibit, May 18th in 2021, but it only included properties built in 2006 or newer. And so again, we followed the methodologies that the city of Longmont did, so we included actual sales, homes or condos or townhouses built 2006 or newer, which we think reflected kind of more recent current construction value and kind of quality and market expectations.
Thank you, Planner Ritchie, and thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging my question along the way.
Thank you all, and so Director Zuccaro, you were just about to go into the cons.
Yeah, sure, so just in our analysis, we did talk about some of the potential cons. Additional regulations could discourage additional housing development. Again, that's part of that economic analysis that could further restrict supply and, which could, you know, impact housing affordability, so that's something to consider. A lot of cities, and you'll see this in the article that we included, financial incentives, some cities are choosing to do more of an incentive-based system, and they find that's more effective for their city. The city, our city does have limited undeveloped residentially zoned property, so there's, there is a limited ability to build new affordable housing under our current zoning. And then, of course, you know, staff capacity, we would have to come up with some resources and expend some resources on managing the program as well, so that's something to consider. So we did provide, again, some real general background information as well on just housing policy in general. We linked to the American Planning Association website for some of their policies and articles on affordable housing, in case that was helpful for any of the council members. But with that, I'll end the presentation, and note staff is recommending approval of the ordinance to create a new chapter in our zoning code for inclusionary housing. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Director Zuccaro, and just a reminder for everyone participating, when we review an ordinance, there are two rounds of public comment, and so this brings us to our first round of public comment on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand feature at the bottom of your screen or dialing *9 on your phone, and just know that there's a queue of folks raising their hand, so I will get to you, so just leave it up, and I'll get to you in the order that the hands were raised. So first, this, and just as a reminder, if everyone could please tell us their name and their address, and then whatever you'd like to tell us, you'll have three minutes. Our first commenter this evening is Trudy Gigi.
Good evening, everyone. My name, thank you for letting me have a few minutes. My name is Trudy Gigi, I live on the north side of Louisville at 1720 Eisenhower Drive. I have lived here since 1996, and in fact, my husband and I bought our first home in Louisville. This ordinance came to my attention through my work with Together Colorado, which is a faith-based advocacy group representing about 200 churches and faith leaders, as well as friends and colleagues at East County Housing Opportunity Coalition, that's ECO. And I want to communicate my support for this ordinance and my request that you also support the ordinance as described by Director Zuccaro. I first want to thank council for investing time and energy in the work plan and in this first, in this first ordinance, this updated chapter. I come to this through my faith, I think this is the right thing to do. I have raised, my husband and I have raised three children here, and we have enjoyed a lot of the benefits of this community, and really feel like the right thing to do is called by my faith is to share that community with others, particularly those that would benefit by affordable housing, those people in need, those people that have a lower income that are called to careers or, or jobs that don't pay them as well as others, and so that, that is really the right thing to do. But in addition to being the right thing to do, this is also a prudent activity to keep our community as rich and diverse and as healthy as it is. We don't want Louisville to start being called a disaster area, or we don't want to think of ourselves as being, having disaster imminent, and so we want to invest in activities like this and the full work plan so that we can address and head off proactively, handle any homeless issues or any workforce issues. We want to keep this community rich and diverse, and we want to make sure we have the workforce to continue. There's still more to do, but I thank you for this first step. I also am impacted personally because two of my children are in their twenties, and like my husband and I, when we moved here, starting to look at investing in their first home, whether that's a rental or purchase, who knows? But in order to make that happen, this is the right kind of change moving forward so that they can live here, and people like them can live here, and we can have folks of all ages, all, all types of incomes, all careers, and maintain the great community that we have. So thank you again for your investment in this time and for letting me have a few minutes.
Thank you for your comments, and I apologize for saying your name wrong, and I apologize if I say other people's names incorrectly as well. Next up, we have Anne Marie Jensen.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Jensen. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm here also on behalf of the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition, and I'm here to say that we value a community of people of diversity. That includes both race and socioeconomic status. Too many families in our community are forced to commute long distances, and this creates congestion. Too many folks are living in inadequate circumstances, doubling and tripling up. We want a diverse, vibrant community, and we believe we are all better for it. We've seen throughout the metro area, the rest of the country, and in Denver, what mixed-use and affordable housing can do. It can create community vitality. Everyone deserves a life of dignity in a safe home, and more affordable housing creates that. We urge you to do more, to go farther, to make Louisville a beacon of what a community can do when they strive to be culturally and economically diverse. I wanted to give you some things to consider as you consider this ordinance, some facts. There are almost 300 children in Boulder Valley Schools who attend school but are homeless. 58% of renters in Boulder County pay more than 30% of their income in rent. And recently, a state housing analyst opined that after the pandemic, an estimated 70,000 more Colorado households will be severely rent burden, meaning they pay more than half of their income on housing costs. These facts point to a situation that is untenable and about which we are asking you to act. The disaster that was spoken of before me is that Summit County has declared itself a disaster, a housing disaster area, because it has such a serious housing shortage that it is having trouble attracting workers. We don't want to do that, and we are steps away if we don't do something. And we appreciate all the work that went into this ordinance, it is a modest step, and more must be done. 60% AMI homes may not help homeless students if their parents are making minimum wage. And while we appreciate and truly value this first step, we know this will not be enough in quantity or in the levels of people who are served. Please keep taking a leadership role, be proactive, think outside the box, and work to build a diverse Louisville. I know you're forming a Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and in order to be equitable, we must take steps to change housing policies that have a long history and roots in racism and segregation. You get a chance to take your place in history to begin to change that. Affordable housing, okay, sorry, I've run over my time, I appreciate that, and thanks for all that you're doing and for this ordinance.
Thank you, and just a reminder, everybody will get a second shot here at our additional public comments. And so next up, we have Anna Sylvia Avendaño Curial.
Good evening, my name is Anna Sylvia Avendaño Curial, and I am a community member in Louisville living around the Harper Lake area. Due to safety reasons, I will not disclose my address, given that as a person of color, not everybody has the same ideas as I do, and so that's okay. But for safety, that is a privilege that I know a lot of my white colleagues and also neighbors are afforded. First of all, I heard from this through the East County Housing Coalition, ECO, and I want to thank all of you for being able to put this in consideration. And I want to thank all of you for being able to put this and consider this as an ordinance. I am in full support of that 12% and also welcome you and encourage you to even consider the 20, increasing it to 20%. I am a single parent of three children. I am a renter in a multi-generational household. Earlier this year, I actually started looking for a home of my own. I got approved for a loan that four years ago would have been sufficient because I have. A wonderful and thriving career. However, that is not the story today. I was faced with the reality that regardless of the home loan that I was approved for, there was not a single house in the area that I could afford. If housing programs like these do not exist, my ability to obtain a home of my own would be literally impossible. I would continue to face higher rental rates that are quite unsustainable, even as my career increases. I would like to have the choice to use that extra income to give my children other opportunities for them to thrive. It would mean that I would have to move further away, uprooting my children once again from the wonderful neighborhood that we've learned to love. My neighbors are amazing. We feel incredibly safe, supported, and absolutely we're thriving. My children are thriving emotionally, psychologically, and physically. We are well-connected to our school, our doctors, we visit our local coffee shops and restaurants, and we absolutely love supporting those businesses. I know that the city of Louisville and all of you as council members are committed to racial equity, and I want to thank you for that. I also want to encourage you to read The Color of Law by Richard Rothstein. If you have not heard about that book. Years ago, what you will find out is that years ago, there was intentional policies on how and who had access to housing. And if you've ever wondered why we lack diversity in our community, it was not by accident. Therefore, we must be as intentional in creating access for homes for everyone. We can start here. To me, affordable housing will mean that I will have the ability to be building small equity. A percentage that will benefit my children generations to come. It becomes a stepping stone to something greater. I will not have to approve my children constantly due to higher rents. And my elderly dad can also afford a place of his own. My community and I benefit from people whose background is diverse, rich in history, and who bring other ideas into the table. So I please. Beg you and encourage you to consider this ordinance and increase it to 20%.
Thank you. Our next commenter this evening is Andrew Hamrick.
Good evening. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Well, thank you. Hey, I'm Andrew Hamrick. I work for an organization called the Colorado Apartment Association, which is a trade association for landlords statewide. Our members own and operate about 327,000 apartment units in the state. In the city of Louisville. They operate 552 units, and I don't know what that compares with your overall rental housing base. Professional address is 7100 East Bellevue Avenue. That's down in the tech center area. This ordinance would require 6% of new residential rental housing to be affordable at 80% average monthly rent. And 6%, an additional 6%, at 60% average monthly rent, and would also require equivalency in those new units. I'm here to tell you about some of the unintended consequences with these types of ordinances. And I'm always struck when I listen to the people that support these, that we all support the same goals, but. An ordinance like this really does have some opposite negative effects to what you may intend. The, the first thing that will happen is that there will be a slowing in development. This represents a tax on new development. The tax is 4.2%. And so until. The value of units inflate to 4.2% above what they currently are, no units will be built. Once that occurs, the new units that are built will experience 4.2% higher rent on the 88% of the people that are there in non-subsidized units. 1.2% of that increase can be attributed to the 60, or excuse me, to the 80% AMI units. And 2.4% of that increase can be attributed to the 60% AMI units. The 60% units are far more difficult and far more expensive to build to. And I don't want you to, to leave this conversation thinking that that mix is not very, very important. It will also have a hugely homogenizing effect on future development there because. Everyone will build as close to 80% AMIs they can possibly build in their project. And what you'll see is a, is a lowering of the building standards for all, which is fine if Louisville wants to be the lower end bedroom for Boulder. But I spend some time up there, and I know what a beautiful and vibrant community you have, and I don't think that's what you're chasing. The other thing that I think people forget about is who is paying for this. The only. Income source to a housing provider are the residents. And those 88% of the people that live in that community are not a full swath of Louisville's tax base. They are people making between 80% average monthly income and 120%. So folks like auto mechanics at 85% AMI, entry level police officers at 90% AMI. Entry level firefighters at 96, entry level registered nurses at 101.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired, but we will have another round of public comment for everybody. Next up, we have Katie Lacy.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Katie Lice, and I live. Near Fireside Elementary at 874 West Mulberry Street. I am speaking up to voice my strong support for ordinance 1809 on inclusionary housing, and I want to thank and applaud everyone who has collaborated on this. Buying a home in Louisville should be a possibility for people from a much wider spectrum of socioeconomic statuses. And I'm eager for the gifts that a broader variety of people would bring to our community. It enriches us. It wouldn't, it doesn't make us into the, the lower end bedroom of Boulder. This fits into our ongoing goal as a city to increase our inclusivity and diversity. And would be a step towards righting some of the historical wrongs of housing segregation and discrimination. I would also like to encourage the council to consider raising the goal for the percentage of affordable housing in the ordinance from 12% up to 20%. To echo our previous commenter. This may not be easy, but it puts us in the range of our neighboring cities, given that Boulder has committed to a goal of 25% and superior to a goal of 15%. I hope that we can do the hard but right thing and push ourselves even further on the worthwhile goal of even greater affordable housing. Finally, I'm calling as a supporter of the organization ECO, East County Housing Opportunity, who brought this ordinance to my attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Erin Weller.
Hello, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Dr. Erin Weller, and I'm at 515 West Furway. I'd like to thank you for tackling the pressing problem of housing in Louisville, and thank you to my ward rep Dennis Maloney for suggesting that I comment. I too am here on behalf of the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition, and I support the inclusionary housing ordinance. I've been a Louisville resident for 20 years. My husband and I purchased our home 15 years ago in our awesome Louisville neighborhood. Because Louisville was the affordable alternative to Boulder. I was a college student, and he was a beginning programmer. And Louisville was our community where we set up our life and we had a family, and my seven-year-old is actually here listening to this right now. Now, the idea that a college student and a beginning professional could buy a house in Louisville on their own is laughable. I've watched family and friends forced out of Louisville by rising prices. But also because there is no suitable housing for seniors in terms of price, size, and layout. When I was before this council in December 2019, I asked you all a question. What is Louisville? We hear Louisville is a small town and that we want to preserve it. But what does that mean? Aspen and Telluride are small towns. Is Louisville an enclave that only values people who can buy property here? Are the people who work here and teach our children and contribute to our community also valuable and deserving of housing? Do we want to send the message that you can work here and contribute, but you aren't worthy of living here in Louisville? I have encountered the attitude that adding attainable housing will somehow hurt our skyrocketing real estate prices. Or attract the wrong kind of people. Opponents of attainable housing use coded terms such as, but what about the traffic? Or it'll change the nature of the community. This is an attitude based in fear and prejudice and one that I do not share. It is time for Louisville to choose a direction on what kind of small town we want to be. Passing this ordinance, ideally with a 20% affordable allotment, is a step in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next commenter is Ken Wilson. You will need to unmute on his end. Ken, it looks like you're muted on your end. It was unmuted. Oh, there you go.
Hello?
We can hear you.
You can hear me now. This is Ken Wilson, 261 Short Place in Louisville. I've been a Louisville resident for 35 years. I'm grateful that my wife Nancy and I, both educators. Were able to purchase a house in Louisville in 1987. I urge you to pass this ordinance. The city staff's analysis of the program is, as usual, informative and perceptive. It pains me that a dispatcher or grocery store worker, or a teacher, or a police officer, or welder, or firefighter. Could no longer afford to purchase or rent housing in our city. This reduces the vitality, the skills base, and the perspectives in our community. And it causes excessive commuting from outlying areas that results in pollution and greenhouse gases that hurt us all. The staff notes that implementation of this inclusionary housing ordinance would only result in 46 additional units of affordable housing. As development of residentially zoned property proceeds. Yet this is a very important beginning. I hope you'll pass this ordinance tonight and then continue to work on the countywide inclusionary housing goals using other tools. Such as incentives and zoning, joint ventures with nonprofits, land trusts, and so on. It's not something that's going to be solved by this one mandate of 12%. I really thank you for the staff for developing this ordinance and for all of you working on it. And I'm really glad to hear that you're going to continue. To work on this problem as the year goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the comments for this first round, but just as a reminder, there'll be another round of public comment, and that takes us to our council questions and comments on this agenda item. Council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions for Directors Zakaro, if that's okay. I wanted to ask, I remember seeing this in, in some of the packet materials, but maybe you can refresh my memory and for folks at home. What's the current rate of affordable housing in Boulder County at that? Yeah.
So one of the communities we compare to was city of Boulder, and maybe that's what you're referring to. Their. Yeah, their inclusionary requirement is 25%. And they've got a low to moderate.
Oh.
Category that's 20% of that, and then a 5% for middle income category.
Sorry, sorry, Directors Zakaro. What I, I think what I meant is what percentage of units that are currently in place. Are considered affordable by the standards that we're using in this particular ordinance.
Okay, I do not know that off the top of my head. That's probably in the. The county strategy report. So let's. I'll have, I'll look at that and maybe our staff can pull that up and see if we can find that number for you.
I was, I'm, I'm remembering 5% for some reason, but you, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Sure.
And maybe you can, maybe you can also, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in the comparison between what, what the percentage is here in Louisville.
Yeah, so in Louisville, we're at 3.1%.
Okay, okay. That's helpful. And so you already talked a little bit about. Where Louisville's ordinance, this particular ordinance is, is a 12%, a requirement of 12% for new developments. Boulder, you said, is at 25, with the breakdown being 20 for under 60% on, under 60% AMI. And 5% for, I guess it's the 60 to 80 in Boulder, is that right? And then Superior being 15%. And then Lafayette not having a specific requirement, is that right? But having a fee in lieu of. Can you, can you talk a little bit about maybe some of the, the other surrounding communities and how they do?
Yeah, and those were the only communities that we, we looked at as comparison within this analysis. And I think you summarized that correctly. Yeah, Lafayette doesn't have a minimum percentage requirement. They have a fee in lieu.
So the way theirs.
Yeah.
Sorry, Director. So the way theirs works is this, any. Any development, regardless, they just pay a fee and then the city does something with that. Is that right?
I believe, that's my understanding. Yes, there is a, a per square foot fee, and then they would be using that money for affordable housing projects.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood sort of where this ordinance sits in relation to our neighboring communities, but it sounds like. Most other communities around us, maybe all of them, have adopted some sort of, some form of this ordinance. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I'll just add my comments in. I'm, I'm very grateful to staff and council for putting this on the work plan and bringing forward this work. I think that inclusionary zoning is a keystone piece of legislation that can be built upon by other things. You know, if this would have been in place six months ago, it would have captured more than a dozen additional homes. If it would have been in place six months before that. Even more homes. Six months before that, you know, you start getting back into North End and Steel Ranch. If you keep going back six, six months at a time, and you start getting more and more homes. And so when you look at the number and you say, well, this may only impact 50 families. First of all, it'll help those 50 families. And second of all, we all know the pressures on the community to rezone properties to residential, given the market for residential properties. So into the future. With redevelopment, we don't know how many residential units this could net out. So I'm very grateful to see this come forward. I think the staff has done a very good job. Putting us in a good position, and the state legislature, legislature has helped us by making it permissible now. So other communities have had to craft their ordinances in a way. Where they had to allow for alternatives and things had to be voluntary, but of course, the state's now taken that away. So we'll see all the communities changing their ordinances to be. Required so that we can get these types of, of things in place. I have heard from some people that, you know, this will cost more for someone. And unfortunately, every single governmental program has to be paid for by someone. And so, you know, everyone is always trying to push the buck to someone else, and there has to be some way. Of providing these types of programs. And so this seems to be what the communities around us are doing. And again, I'm just very grateful for the staff bringing it forward. I would be very interested to hear if council members are interested in pushing the number up. To closer to 20%, like the members of the public who wrote in, talked to us about, I'm supportive of that. But I also recognize that there may need to be a compromise on that point in order to get something passed and in front of our community as soon as possible. So I look forward to hearing the debate around how much inclusionary zoning we should require. Councilmember Fagie.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm, I'm going to just kind of continue on Counselor Brown's question. So. Directors Zakaro, you said that 3.1% of, of our residences are, are affordable. I'm wondering if that's the ones that are only officially. Owned by the, the county and, and maintained as affordable, or does it include other residents like. The trailer park or someplace where, where it probably is affordable, but it's not officially affordable.
Yes, that 3.1% would be a deed restricted affordable through the county housing authority programs.
All right. So we actually probably have more than 3.1% of our housing stock that is affordable. Would that be right?
So yes, I think, I think what you're saying is that, you know, if we looked at the rent, what rent could be afforded at maybe 80 or 60% AMI, there's probably. Rental properties that could be. there's probably rental properties that could be afforded at that 80 or 60% AMI within the city at this time.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lipton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of questions and I, you know, interrupt me if I'm going too long and I can go back to the end if other people want to speak. So if I can just get to them. I was wondering about the management of the program. And it says here, it says the city would be responsible for managing program, including income, qualifications, and appropriate deed restrictions. And I was wondering, how much effort will that take? What would it cost? And how would that be funded?
So we don't have a cost estimate on that. We have talked to other regional jurisdictions about potentially partnering to make that more efficient. You know, there are probably some organizations that could assist with this, but we don't have a cost estimate. I, we don't anticipate, at least in the near future, that it would be something that, you know, would be a full-time position for the city. So we would either have to absorb it with current staff or find ways to partner with other communities or organizations. And then there would probably be a cost, you know, that we would, you know, pay another local community or other organization to help us administer it.
And Councilmember Lipton, if I might add, I was talking to Commissioner Jones about this point and just asking Commissioner Jones if we do pass this this evening, if the county would be interested in the conversation. And he said that, you know, if it passes, to talk to Norrie Boyd and County Housing to try to understand how we might be able to form some partnerships around this with them.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would hope that we don't necessarily have to do this on our own and that we can use another entity to do it because of the fact we don't have the, really, the experience base nor the people to do it. And it wouldn't be a large number of units. So it would, it would make sense to look at perhaps Boulder County or another entity to manage. I was wondering, you know, I, I don't believe for a second that this comes free. And I, I don't buy the contention of the article that, you know, this all gets absorbed and the, you know, magically the cost, you know, doesn't occur to somebody. I, I think that's just not the way development works. Or do I think it, you know, it syncs up with, you know, real basic economics? And I was wondering whether there could be consideration to help reduce the cost to the others that will probably end up having to absorb the cost, whether we could look at some form of density bonus as part of this to basically incentivize the development of the affordable housing and do it in a way so that it doesn't become an additional $20,000 per house burden to the development or, you know, additional cost to the renters who might be renting there. So I was wondering if there had been, you know, I'm not, and I'm not thinking about an enormous amount of density increase, but, you know, if a development needs to have three, three units, as an example, to be under this kind of program, why we couldn't consider, you know, one to three additional units for the development through additional density? So Rob, can you comment on that?
Sure, yeah. So, so the Lincoln Institute article, what it suggests is that rather than the cost being distributed to the other renters or purchasers of homes in the community is that, yeah, somebody would have to pay for it, but it would probably be the, the land developer or the property owner selling the land for development. It would get absorbed between those two entities. But as far, you know, when I've seen density bonuses, often those are, you know, if you're going above and beyond an inclusionary, you might get additional density, you might get a density bonus, say, for going over 12% or whatever the minimum is. But I think more to your point is, I think that, you know, in many cases, having additional density in a development does add an economic benefit to that development that could, you know, help distribute or make up for the cost, the additional cost. So there probably is some logic to that additional density, you know, helping with the economics of the project.
Sure. And, you know, I understand that if you're looking probably at large projects, large amount of land being transacted, you have an additional burden on the developer. Yeah, I could see in that case that, you know, perhaps the price of the land might be affected. But I, you know, for what we're looking at in Lewisville with the number of units and the amount of new land that would actually be developed as opposed to what I think will be likely for us in Phil, I just am struggling with assuming the price of the land is going to necessarily be absorbed by the seller. And I know for the developer's side, you know, I, I don't think the developer can necessarily reduce their profits and be able to get the financing necessarily, necessary to do the project. So everybody thinks, well, the developer's making all this money and, you know, there is a certain minimum amount of basically return that a developer would need to achieve. And I'm, I don't think that would be sacrificed. And, and nor should it have to be sacrificed. And the financing entities, the banks, the investors, you know, aren't going to expect that to be sacrificed either because that is part of their, their equity and part of what protects their investment in the property. I would like to have us consider some language that, you know, might allow for density bonuses to be considered as part of this ordinance. You know, and it doesn't mean we have to create that tonight if we want to approve that. But I, I'd certainly like to see some, it somehow mentioned in the, in the ordinance. I was curious about the deed restriction process. Oh, oh, and then going, I'm sorry, Rob, going back to this, this issue of, you know, the value of the land. So perhaps, perhaps you could make that argument for, you know, single detached houses for, for rental units. I'm assuming that the rental unit price goes up over or down over time depending on the marketplace. Or is it just the rental price for that particular development?
So the, so the rental would be restricted to the, you know, the AMI, it would be based on the AMI in effect, as I would understand it. So if you're restricted to 80% or 60% of the AMI, the deed restriction would state that you can't rent for those units above that. So that gets updated from time to time. So I, we haven't developed the exact deed restriction language, but, you know, that does change over time. You know, the HUD AMI that we're working off of, that I think most communities work off of, I think looks at, I think it's a three-person household, 80% or 60% AMI or whatever we're using. And so that would change over time. So I think the, again, not knowing the exact deed restriction language, I think we would have to deal with that to make sure that that would adjust over time.
Okay, so that then doesn't go back to the value of land when it's transacted? Or even necessarily to the cost of development?
Probably not in a rental unit, but within their pro forma as their, you know, as they are working the pro forma out. You know, if they know they can only rent, you know, if there's 12% of their units that are restricted to that rental fee, you know, they would know that as they are working out their pro forma for that development and would include that, I would presume, you know, in their econo, in their financial analysis of the development. And determine if it was feasible for them and they had a reasonable rate of return, they would have to decide that.
Councilmember Lipton, you said to maybe put a pin in it and let some other folks go and they come back to you. Is that okay if I do that at this point? And then we'll circle back to you in a second?
That's fair. Thanks.
Great. Mayor Proton Maloney?
Well, I was enjoying Counselor Lipton's questions. You know, when I look at the agenda today, we're looking at ordinance 1809. And it's really talking about inclusionary zoning. And, you know, that's something that I support. So I just want to state that upfront. And I also believe that the information that was provided by Director Zakaro and the rest of the planning staff was very well done. So, you know, with that, I, I go back to our work plan meeting on January 12th and Counselor Lay was suggesting that we, we talk about this in a broader way as opposed to talking about it in two different pieces. And I may have been slow to the party, Counselor Lay, but I think that's exactly the kind of questions that, in some of the discussion we've already had tonight. You know, the question, should we go to 20%? And, you know, some of the questions from Counselor Lipton are about other things that we should be considering. So, you know, with that, I like the idea of density bonus, but my question is, how do we fund that? So, you know, we have another meeting scheduled for this in August, August 24th, which is a, I believe it's a study session with planning staff. The inclusionary housing is one piece of the puzzle. I think this is important. I think the mayor made a very strong, you know, argument or why we should do this sooner than later because we're losing ground. We don't want to lose any more ground. But I also think that while I think this is important, I'm not going to be satisfied until we have the next discussion and talk about the other potential items around this. You know, do we need a linkage or impact fee to fund a density bonus? Potentially. I mean, I think that's sort of an interesting idea. But at this point in the discussion, I would pass this as is, knowing that we're having a discussion in August where I believe that we need to be looking at this more holistically. And I wish we had sort of structured that way going forward. We didn't. This is where we're at. I don't want to lose ground. So I would, I would suggest we consider passing this, having a deeper discussion in August about other factors that we should be considering for whether it's density bonuses or what the percentage should be. And that we do that in a very quick way by the end of the year, then we'll have sort of comprehensively looked at this issue. It's a very important issue. It's something I would like to see us take action on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Apologies to everyone as I look left at my other monitor that has all my notes. I wish my camera was here. So, yeah, I appreciate all the comments so far. And, you know, I think, so I want to start here mostly with just, with, obviously with the questions. You know, the big, the big, the big question is, you know, what's, what's the goal and how are we trying to accomplish that goal? So I think I'll just put all my questions to Director Zakaro if you don't mind. But are we trying to get to 12% in Lewisville? Or are we just trying to help the county get to 12% as a, as a member of the county?
Yeah, sure. You know, there's a lot of discussion about that when the county housing strategy was adopted. And I think everybody acknowledged that, you know, the goal is 12% countywide and perhaps not all communities, you know, would be at 12%. They would all have their own strategies over time. And, but yeah, I think, I think it's up to city council if you want to try to achieve 12% within the city itself or some other number. But again, the strategy was 12% countywide, not 12% within each jurisdiction.
Okay, and not to put too fine of a point on it, but if we're at 3.1% and the county is at something, you know, Councilmember Brown asked, something like 5%, you know, are we, is there a realistic goal for Lewisville to get to 7, 8, 9% in order to help that number get to 12? Or do we, do we have really no idea what that, our internal goal would be to, to, to help out the whole county?
Sure, yeah. And so, yeah, to confirm Councilmember Brown's, what he read, that is correct. So page eight of the county housing strategy does note the 5% countywide. So just to confirm that, he was, he did recollect that. So I, you know, I think that what the county strategy also talks about is that it's got to be more than kind of one tool. So, you know, your communities are probably going to have to look at acquiring existing developments, for example. That could be something that communities could look at. And then restricting some or all of those and then, you know, putting them back out to the market or something like that. Or having another funding source that would be a really robust funding source that would allow organizations like the county housing authority to acquire more land and build more housing. So, you know, I think that in order to reach that 12%, you know, it acknowledges, we're not going to build our way out of it necessarily without, you know, looking at existing housing stock and other more creative tools.
Okay, and so, you know, Councilmember Fahey brought up a good point that we have sort of, as I think of it, big A affordable housing and little a affordable housing. So those, those official homes that are de-restricted or in a program versus just naturally affordable by, by their price. And so I just want to point out again that, or I guess ask, you know, are we trying to get to 12% big A affordable housing? And then on top of that, and, you know, more little a affordable housing, is, is the goal strictly big A?
Right. So, yeah, I think the goal will, to some extent, have to be defined by council, of course. But what the county's housing strategy also discusses is how important homeownership is in order for families to gain equity in the house. So, you know, having affordable rentals is great, but having affordable homeownership is also an important part of the equation. So, you know, I think, I think the goals that this community wants to set is a great discussion. And, you know, we'd ultimately want direction from city council. If we, if there was information, we could provide to help with that decision. We'd want to know what that is so we could bring that back to the council.
Okay. You gave us a number of 383 potential new units. That's based on current and sort of old proposals that, you know, are calling for certain amounts of instruction. Do you have any idea how that 383 is reflected as far as the total potential new building that's already zoned residential? Like, I'm looking at 383 as, that's the most new units we're ever going to get in Lewisville from my way off. Are there, are there lots of other places that just aren't, you know, they haven't entered a PUD? But there's, there are more spaces for more units under our current zoning period?
Sure, yeah. So really what we looked at is properties that haven't been developed yet, for the most part, that, you know, some of them might have a few houses on it. For example, the East Street properties have a few older houses, but we're anticipating a formal, you know, more, we're anticipating, excuse me, redevelopment of that property. We're not aware of any other large undeveloped parcels. So I think what this excludes are properties that are zoned. Maybe they're already developed, maybe with apartments or housing, but perhaps you could squeeze in some more density under zoning. But that would be unlikely. Just the economics of that is really unlikely. So we did try to list everything that was undeveloped. You know, we are a landlocked community. You know, we don't have a lot of areas to annex. So I think that we, this does, to some extent, represent what's zones now for additional residential development that we could anticipate in the, maybe short to midterm.
Okay. And then, just kind of technical question. You know, if, if someone builds three homes and they're supposed to do 12% affordable, that's 0.36 of a home, what, how do we deal with fractions? Do they have to get over 0.5 or over 1.0 in order to have to build one affordable unit? How does the breakdown work if they're not building, say, 100 units, right? If they're just building four, five, six, seven, nine, 10?
Sure, that's a great question. So I think that, you know, one thing is, is that it's really going to be So I think that, you know, one thing is, is that it's really going to be six or more. So you don't have to, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to, for a residential development, you don't have to go through a planned unit development process until you are over six units. So it's not going to be less than that for this to be triggered. But, you know, I think if you, I, I don't know that we've answered that rounding question. That's, that's a good question. I think we would probably round to, you know, we probably round to the nearest, you know, if it was three point four, I'm thinking we could just require three or go up, you know, if it was three point five or more, we'd go up to four units would be required, for example. I'm not aware we've addressed that specificity in the ordinance. It's a good question that we probably need to figure out.
Okay, I think, Mayor, that may be the end of my questions. I think the dedication, I guess before I go, so I don't know, Mayor, I have some things I'd like to say in order to get public response, but they aren't questions. But, but if I don't say these before the public has a chance to speak again, they'll never be able to react to my thoughts, so I can save those till.
So if you look on the agenda, we're on the line. So we took the first round of public comments and this round is called Council Questions and Comments on the agenda. So go ahead and make your comments now.
Okay. So just a couple of thoughts. Permanently affordable is really important, but it also does something interesting like the deed restriction. One of the big things about home ownership is gaining appreciation when a house gains in value. But if it's deed restricted, you don't get all that appreciation, right? So when a, when a house doubles in cost and it's deed restricted, you don't get all that appreciation. And that's a huge part of the benefit of homeownership. So we just need to be conscious of that, that fact that they do gain equity in that instead of just paying rent, they're paying against their loan. And so they are gaining value as their, as their mortgage gets lower and the value of the home stays the same. But they don't get to really reap the benefits of the huge appreciation. I think that's an important part of permanently affordable housing, is that it needs to be affordable for the next person. And so sometimes those are actually just as useful as rental as they are homeownership. The, to have the fifty to sixty, you know, sixty percent AMI. And there have been questions about whether we should lower that. And I definitely think that's something worth talking about. You know, I'm concerned when we talk about what the goal is, right? The goal is to have more affordable housing. And my concern is, I want to make really clear that I'm super supportive of affordable housing. So I hope for all the public, you know that about me, that I think this is really important. My fear is if I say ten percent or twenty percent or forty percent or fifty percent, the higher I go, the less likely it is to be built. And then I get zero percent. And so if my goal is to get way more affordable housing, how do I actually accomplish that as a policymaker? Because if I say fifty percent and then we get nothing, I haven't accomplished it. So that's one of the things I'm battling with is great to go up, but if, if that, if that, if that creates no development of any affordable housing, we haven't really achieved it. I am in support of the idea of density bonuses. So again, if I'm going to build a hundred homes, which we don't have a lot of place that could do that, but I'm going to build a hundred and you want me to do twenty percent affordable, then can I build a hundred and twenty homes? Right, can I get a density bonus to build an extra twenty? And those extra twenty are affordable or twenty-two, once I've built a hundred and twenty, if you get the math. That makes it a little bit more doable for them as a developer who actually wants to do it. And waiving fees or changing zoning to allow for more of it is important. And I think my last comments are mostly mathematical, so try to bear with me. But I think, you know, if we did a hundred percent affordable housing of the, of the remaining three hundred and eighty-three units in the packet, we would get to seven point two percent affordable housing in Lewisville. Right, so I think that's, that's a pretty great number. That's more than double what we have, but that's a hundred percent affordable with all of the stock we have left. And so, you know, if we go from twelve to twenty-five percent, we gain, we get to four point one percent affordable housing. If we do this twelve percent, we get to three point five and that's in the, that's in the packet. We get to three point five percent affordable housing if we do this and it gets built and people do the twelve percent. They don't pay the fee in lieu, they really build these things, we get three point five. And if we basically double it to twenty-five percent, we get four point one. This is, the stuff we're talking about tonight is a drop in the bucket. And again, I really want this, I really care about it, I really want affordable housing. But I don't think this ordinance is going to get us there. I don't think this is the way we're going to get a lot of affordable housing. But saying you don't have to do any doesn't get us there either, for sure. Saying you don't have to do affordable housing, don't worry about it, that doesn't get us there either. So I'm just, I'm frustrated because my T-shirt, it's complicated, right? Like, it's just, this is really complicated and I want there to be more affordable housing. And I think to Chris Lay's point and Des Maloney's point, it's a much, much bigger conversation and many, many tools to get us there. But I wanted to say all those things out loud in case people from the public wanted to comment on some of the things I was thinking about. Thank you, Mayor, for your patience.
You, Councilmember, Councilmember Lay.
Oops, sorry about that. I guess I have a couple of comments, preliminary comments, and then a question. First of all, I appreciate staff's work on this. This is a lot of work, really good materials. And I know there's just a whole bunch of things on their plate and I very much appreciate that. I did months ago talk about wanting to do this comprehensively and considering this among an array of options for bringing more affordable housing to Lewisville. The council did talk about phasing and I think, you know, that is what we directed the, the planning department to do. And that sort of leaves us with, you know, a couple of options. And not suggesting that there's any support for anyone, a number of these. But I mean, we could, as, as it would seem, simply kind of pass this ordinance and move on to the next issues as they come to us after our conversation, I think in August. We could, you know, finish the hearing or not finish the hearing, but go through the rest, most of the rest of the hearing and continue this, which has the downside, of course. Something could happen in the meantime and then we lose some ground. And on, by the same token, we, we kind of do make all our decisions at once. Or we could, I think what Mayor Proten was suggesting was sort of pass and then potentially amend or pass with the idea that we might amend. Then you could amend to increase the percentage or adjust some of these numbers after we've had a chance to talk about it. But, you know, I recognize that this is what's before us and I kind of, of those, I don't expect that there's probably a lot of support for continuing the public hearing. And I, I guess the, the only concern that I have about passing something and then amending is that, you know, there's always arguments later on that, well, you seemed to support that a couple of months ago and now you're backtracking. And I think we have to be, if we do, if we really take the problem of affordable housing as a bigger, more complicated issue, which it is, I think, then I think we need to be open to truly revisiting things later on in light of the whole picture without, you know, without recrimination. I think though, the question came up at the very outset, or the point was made of what sort of a community do we want to be? And that is a really good question. But part of the problem here is what kind of a community have we been? Because that's what has gotten us to this point. We are, as I think all of the council members have spoken and, and others, Director Sakaro and the else recognize, we don't have a lot of room, even with this measure, to be making headway. We're going to have to do other things. And that's because of decisions that we've made in the past, including recent, you know, decisions as recent as the, at least the first part of the Redtail discussion. So we can all talk about affordable housing and say we're for that and then we don't want to do this or that. And it's, it's hard because at some point you do run out of, you run out of space, you run out of options. Or you run out, you, you limit your options, you're never completely out of options. But I, I do think it's really important that the equity issue, which is at the bottom of most of this, is an issue that has been built up for a long time. And we have, as we've learned on equity issues, not the duty to be perfect, but the duty to be excellent. And I think we're seeing now in Lewisville, a conversation about small town values that is really shifting and becoming more inclusive. And with that, there's going to be tensions of the kind that we're dealing with in, in this thing. You know, my, my own, just, I think it's probably useful to talk just a little bit about some of the history that maybe some of the council members weren't, weren't a part of, a number of us were. You know, my own involvement in this came as a result of the being part of the consortium of cities, which worked on this issue for some time and then put together a conference and all of our council members, I was very, very proud, I think all of us were, that the whole council, every, everybody, no matter what their views about any part of affordable housing, there were a lot of people with reservations, showed up there. And we all did adopt the county wide proposal. I think what we did, to be sure, and that was a different council, mind you, than we have right now, of course. But the idea was we would do this in a Lewisville way, or whatever that means. But that we would figure out our own way, we weren't going to commit to a particular kind of policy or otherwise. And that's what we've done anyway. And I think that was a concern, especially of Councilmember Lipton at the time, not just him, the rest of us, that we not sort of cede our authority to somebody else. So anyway, that, that is, you know, we came up, I think as a county with that twelve percent. I, that's very, that's pretty aggressive. It's not as aggressive as we want, but remember in the county, we've got a lot of open space. We've got a lot of decisions that have been made that put us here. I, I'm, maybe that number needs to go up, but I'm not prepared to push it. I want to get to that twelve percent in whatever way we can. And I have my own misgivings about some aspects of the, the ordinance. It mostly just perhaps a philosophical issue that the Lewisville way has been to try to, you know, in the past, has been to provide incentives. I do support density bonuses. I think above and beyond the twelve percent, I think people who propose that ought to, ought to get benefit for that. So I do support that. And overall, I think the, you know, we've already talked to, other people have talked about the pluses and minuses. I think what I would say is that in, in the end, I think I would support passage of this proposal with an addition for density bonus that we could, we could figure out tonight or we can get a little bit more information and add that. But I would say I'd really urge us to maintain open minds to change, modify, cut back, increase numbers that we have later as we look at the bigger picture and the other tools. Thanks.
Councilmember Lipton.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have a few more boring questions to ask. And I do want to say point out, I think Proten Maloney said something in passing that density bonuses would cost the city money or, you know, it would cost us. But I think in the context of this, we're not talking about a cost to the city. The density bonuses would be just an allowance for the developer to be able to construct a few additional units. And, you know, if we're talking about, you know, three hundred and eighty, you know, potential units left under the current zoning within the city. I mean, to me, to allow for, you know, a number of four hundred to four hundred and twenty is not going to be the end of the world. And if that's what we need to make this a little bit easier to work, work with the, with the developers and to provide some incentives, I, I certainly would like to encourage us to look at that. I, I don't know how to do it in the context of trying to pass this tonight, we can talk about that. I, I think there are some amendments that we should consider density bonuses as part of this, part of this ordinance. I do, I do have a question on section seventeen point seven six point oh five oh, it's on page two seventy-five of the packet. There's an item, it's item A one, quantity and design. And it says the design materials used for construction of affordable units shall be equivalent in quality to the market rate units. And I, I was wondering, Rob, how how literal that should be taken? I mean, I mean, when I needed affordable housing, I, you know, I, I wasn't looking at granite. I was looking at everything I could do to, you know, develop, not develop, but find a house that perhaps didn't have the same, you know, kind of design and quantity or quality that, you know, other people had. So I don't know, is this suggesting everybody has to get granite countertops? Or, you know, what are we trying to get here?
Sure, so, you know, I think the intent of this is that, you know, part of having an inclusionary ordinance, again, if you're building on site, is that you are incorporating affordable housing within the, a neighborhood itself, rather than kind of having affordable housing developments, you know, kind of segregated throughout the community. And so I think in the spirit of that, you also want the affordable units to be of an equivalent quality. You know, I, I think because what you're trying to achieve is kind of that inclusive environment where you don't have, you know, where you, where you don't have certain housing within a neighborhood or a community that is of a lesser quality based on that, you know, that affordability restriction that you're putting on it. So I think it is a little bit, there may be some policy behind that that council could direct. But I think that's the intent is to try to, you know, have that, have that incorporated and inclusive within the community and not have, you know, units that are, you know, that just because you can't afford, you know, you can't afford it, that you shouldn't have the same minimum level of quality. You know, and that's actually an interesting, you know, I was listening to a seminar today about that specific issue. And that was the example that was brought up, was countertops, that you don't want, you know, your, your affordable units to have, you know, cheap laminate countertops perhaps when the rest of the neighborhood has a higher quality of design within the unit itself.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, this is getting into the weeds, but I kind of struggle with some of this. And I think it's, you know, in terms of the size of the homes and, you know, the size, the design, you know, the minimum material requirements, right? the size, the design, you know, the minimum interior requirements, right? I understand why we want some equivalency, but, you know, then when you get to some of the, you know, more discretionary things about finishes, I, I, you know, I hope we'll be a little bit flexible on that. Because, you know, that's, you know, just the way the world works. And in every subdivision, people have different, you know, levels of, you know, finishes and quality on the interior based on, you know, a number of things, number of reasons. But not everybody's going to have the same, uh, the same level. Then on page 279, now we're getting into the deed restrictions. And tell, tell me, how do these deed restrictions work as a matter of practicality when somebody desires to sell their, uh, their home? Or, you know, somebody is gonna, you know, move out of a apartment? I mean, how, how does this work within the process of actually marketing and selling? And, um, you know, trying, trying to change ownership or, or rental?
Sure. And if City Attorney Kelly has any insight on that, I'd invite her as well to, to answer that, how that deed restriction might be structured. But what, what I believe would happen is that, you know, there's an op, and that, this is where you need administration too, but the deed restriction itself would require that, you know, when that house is being listed for sale, I believe, that that would have to be disclosed, that it's, um, you know, it's, that it's an affordable unit, and this is how it would be limited in cost. So, you know, I've seen some listings like that in Boulder, for example. So they will say whether it's for sale or for rent, you know, it's in the real estate listing. So again, I don't, we haven't drafted the deed restriction, we haven't gotten to that point. But I believe it would be required through the deed restriction, how it gets listed is my, is what I believe would happen. But if City Attorney Kelly has any other insight, I'd invite her to provide that as well.
Sure. Thanks, Rob. So the deed restriction is a legal document that's filed with the county clerk and recorder. And so it will appear in the title work for a for-sale unit. And, you know, so the, that the prospective purchaser and lender have noticed that there are restrictions on the sale of that unit. With regard to rental, uh, I believe that it, it works in much the same way. I'm more familiar with the for-sale aspect, but that it would go of record. And, um, the administrator of the program is more involved with the rental units. But, you know, if the building that contains the units is sold, then again, that would be part of the title work that is available to the buyer and the lender and other parties with a need to know.
So it would, it sounds to me like the most prudent way of moving forward as a buyer or renter is, is basically to, you know, in advance of advertising or, you know, trying to enter in an agreement to have the city manager's office or wherever we're contracting with to manage this approve language.
Yes. And so really how this would be administered is there would be sort of a form of deed restriction that would be required for each of the units, whether they're for sale or for rent. And those would be required to be recorded at the time that other documents, it's sort of like HOA covenants are required to be recorded before they sell any lots in a subdivision that's subject to covenants. The, these deed restrictions would be required to be recorded, um, you know, at, at the front end of development as well.
Okay. And then there was an issue in Denver about two or three years ago about, uh, these deed restrictions not being made available to owners, I mean, to buyers. And, and then Denver got jammed up on that issue because there were people that eventually had to leave their homes because of that. Do you, do you remember what, what that was about?
I don't, I don't have any personal knowledge. You know, that's something we can look into and, um, you know, as long as they're recorded as they should be, then there shouldn't be any issue. When you are purchasing a home, you receive a title commitment, it lists exceptions. You're supposed to receive all of those documents that are of record. You know, people don't always read all those documents. But with a, a restriction like this, you know, I believe that the realtor and other parties involved, particularly the lender, will be looking for things like that. And so there shouldn't be any purchasers who buy a deed restricted home unawares.
My, my understanding, Councilmember Lipton, was it was an issue with title companies not actually doing the work. And so then the buyers had recourse against the title agency.
Well, and I think it was because Denver did not enforce the restrictions and then were pressured when they found out, you know, they weren't, to start enforcement. And, and that's when they, you know, gave people a cure period, but, you know, and then started, uh, actually having people leave their homes because of, of the covenants. So it's just, I think it's, uh, the administration of these programs have to be taken very seriously. I mean, people can get jammed up, um, and, and the city can get jammed up. So it's, it's not something we can assume is going to take its own course and just be, you know, managed through title companies or real estate brokers or, you know, owners of the apartments. I do have a question on that same, oh gosh, the same page. Yeah, page 279, it's actually page 280, where it says the, um, the manager, it's section B, the manager may release and discharge a rental covenant after 30 years duration. So, why do we, why is this potentially going away after 30 years? Is 30 years a magic number? If it's 30 years for rental, why would it not be 30 years for owner-occupied?
So the part of that section is, so it may be released if the owner of the units pays to the city for each deed restricted affordable rental, the amount of the difference between the value. So this was something that we saw in other ordinances, and it just gives an option. You know, if, if there's a owner of rental units that wants to have that deed restriction released and they pay the, the difference, the value to the city, it would put them in the same position as if the original developer of that rental project would have paid a cash-in lieu. You know, it's an option, it's something that, you know, it's certainly up to the council's consideration. It's not something the council would ever have to do. It's not something that needs to be in the ordinance now. If the council wanted to add a provision like this later to provide that kind of option, the council could do that as well.
I think my concern is by even, even mentioning it and being this specific, it may set up an expectation. As opposed to being silent and there's no expectation, but certainly, you know, the, you know, administration and the council at that time might consider, you know, making changes if it's in the best interest of the community. And then my other question, Kathleen, was why, why would that be for the rental covenants and not the ownership covenants, having that same language?
You know, I don't know that I have a good answer for that, other than, um, you know, ownership of apartment building is just different than ownership of single-family homes. And, um, you know, like I said, this was just an option that we saw in other ordinances. And so wanted to make that available to the city of Lewisville as well. But it's certainly up to the council's discretion whether that's included or not in the ordinance.
Okay. Well, it certainly, I, I know it's a small point for probably most people, but to me, it's kind of, if it's in there, it's, uh, something we really should be thinking about. So if anybody else has comments on that, I appreciate hearing that.
Councilmember Lipton, could you please reiterate the page number?
Yes, page 280. It's, uh, section B on page 280.
Thank you.
Uh, that's, I'm sorry, that's all I have for now. Thanks for, you know, uh, letting me ask all these questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you. Yes. Um, I, I'm kind of going off what Council Lipton was just talking about. I know we probably don't have any control or, or authority, but, uh, when someone qualifies for that lower-income rental unit, do they, do they have that ability to renew that lease in perpetuity? Or does that ability to stay in that unit go away when their income goes up and becomes higher than what qualified them to get the unit in the first place? And I guess with the housing, it's, it's different because you're buying it and you can stay in it until you don't want to pay for the property anymore. But, but for the rentals, I'm, I'm just wondering how you would renew a lease on a rental in a low income?
So I'll, I'll try to start to answer that. I don't know that our ordinance addresses that specifically, so it's a good question. And maybe we need to add something specific about it, unless City Attorney Kelly knows otherwise. But I think in the administration of it, potentially, um, you know, at some point, you would no longer qualify. You know, I don't know if that, we would maybe do a verification periodically, if, if we felt like that was important. So you'd have to re, I think what you might require is income verification on an annual basis or some other periodic basis to, to stay within that unit, in the program.
Yes, this is City Attorney Kelly. And that's my understanding how these programs are administered for the rental units is that the occupants do need to be qualified when leases are renewed.
Thank you, City Attorney Kelly. Councilmember Fahey, was that it for your questions?
That was it.
Thank you. So, um, I'll just make a motion to frame the discussion, to see where council's kind of going, so that the second round of public comment, people kind of get a sense for where we're, we're going and correct us if we, if they need to. So I would move that we approve ordinance number 1809, series 2021, except that we would strike section B on page 280. And if there's a second, I'd like to speak to the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, so I really appreciate the discussion tonight. And Mayor Protem Maloney laid out what I think is a stage path forward, which is to get something on the books so that we stop losing ground. We really truly have lost ground since we talked about this just less than six months ago in January, with every applicant that comes in, application that comes in for residential units. If we don't have a floor for a requirement of affordable units, then they don't get built. And, and when we have these quasi-judicial hearings, Councilmember Lipton does a really good job reminding us that we have to be fair to every applicant and apply our rules. So if we want affordable units, we have to require affordable units. If we want building electrification, we have to require building electrification. We can't just tell one applicant or another they have to do it. So, um, I think going on that, getting this floor on the books is important. And it, it's an important, as I said before, an important keystone that we can build the rest of our ordinances around and continue to expand upon. But without this, I think we'll continue to lose ground. Any other discussion of the motion? Councilmember Lipton.
Thank you. I always have to see if I'm muted. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess generally supportive of moving this forward. But there is so much more work to be done. And, you know, this, this to me is, you know, maybe perhaps past the rough draft stage. But there's, there are other improvements I think we can make to this. And I don't know how we can, um, make the commitment that we will look at this. I'm, I'm particularly interested in the density bonus issue. And, I mean, this is, uh, inclusionary zoning. And, uh, you know, the zoning is part of the, you know, the title. And it really comes down to kind of a zoning and, and land use issue. And I, I, you know, I, I would really like to get the commitment that we will have a, an intelligent conversation about potential density bonuses with the analysis that's necessary for us to have that intelligent conversation. So I don't know how to do that in the context of trying to approve this tonight. You know, and maybe there is a, you know, a way we can kind of get that in front of us fairly quickly. I mean, yes, we don't want to lose ground, but we also don't want to lose opportunity. So if you have any thoughts on how to accomplish that, I'd certainly welcome hearing those.
Well, I just, I think on our work plan, like, we've all committed to doing other steps and that conversation is coming in August. So I think Directors of Carrow's hearing that there are at least two members of council, I think maybe I heard three members of council say they have interest in looking at density bonuses. So, I mean, it is on our work plan, it is on our advanced agenda. I mean, we've all committed to doing that work. I'm not sure what else to say.
So could we carve out time during that conversation to look at the issue of density bonuses as related to this program and perhaps others? And is that something, Rob, you could commit to in terms of finding time to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we had anticipated that at, at the August study session. That would be part of the discussion. We'll bring hopefully some good information and analysis and, you know, maybe some scenarios of how that could play out in other cities' ordinances. So we could see all other cities have crafted density bonuses. So we'll, we'll bring all that to the study session.
Okay, thank you.
Next, uh, oh, my hand just went up and down. I'm sorry if I missed someone. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have really a quick comment. I, I, I share both the mayor's and Councilor Lipton's perspective. And I'd like to find a way that we can agree to move ahead. You know, so I'd like to see us approve the ordinance that we have with the amendment as proposed. I also believe that the future meeting we have, I would like to change from a study session to a direction discussion session, so we can actually give clear direction. So the one in August, rather than just being a study session, uh, you know, Councilor Lipton's, you know, wants to talk more about the density bonus. It's a very interesting idea to me, and I'd like to be able to, based upon the staff's report, be able to give direction there, so that we're moving posthaste with this. And so I, I, I share really all those perspectives and want to move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought, I apologize. I thought I saw another hand. So if another member wants to comment, please raise your hand again. All right. Not seeing any, that takes us to our final round of public comment on this agenda item this evening. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item, this is your final opportunity. And the first member of the public to comment is Whitney Garcia.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I just want to say thank you very much to all of you for the, um, all the council members and Mayor Stoltman for, um, the work that you do for our community and then for giving us time to speak tonight on this important issue. I strongly support the inclusionary housing ordinance that was presented tonight. And I want to thank you for passing it. And, um, I want to go ahead and share my story with you because I appreciate that you're hearing from community members. So I, I've lived in Colorado for about 16 years, about five of them in, in, not in Colorado, in Boulder County, about five of them in Lewisville, and I work in Boulder County. I feel very strongly about contributing to the community. I'm a professional and a volunteer and an advocate for older adults. So this is my story, but there are shared aspects of it in many other younger local professional lives. So I've been renting for many years, including sharing housing and now renting on, on my own, because I wanted my own space, but it's a very, very small studio. I'm working very hard to save and to purchase a home. I'm consistently overwhelmed and discouraged by the prices of housing all throughout Boulder County. But also upon learning that there's, there is really no affordable housing program in Lewisville, where I currently live, where I find my community. I'm single, I hold a full-time professional job, and I would like very much, um, in the near future, to foster or adopt a child. But that's absolutely not possible in the size of the rental that I currently live in. So to support the goals that I have, I need a bigger space and desire to purchase instead of continuing renting, so that I can count on a place where I'm investing, creating stability and securing, uh, and security for myself and, and. and securing, and security for myself and, and a child. I wanted to comment on Mr. Sakaro. I hope you're saying, am I saying your name right? I apologize if I'm not. Stated that affordable rentals is one thing, but affordable homeownership is also important. And I just want to reiterate that because I believe that's very, very true. It is for me because of the investment and the commitment that homeownership brings to one that is, is to a person who's wanting to, could stay in their community and contribute to it. So I'm also hearing, or I did hear that asking for too much, and referencing some of the council's comments about the complicated math and larger realities of affordable housing may not solve much. There are lots of details that I don't understand, but I'm here to say that I do believe it's a step in the right direction and very necessary for the prohibitively expensive housing market here in Boulder County and here in Lewisville. So again, thank you for passing this ordinance. I want to say that the cost of housing and its administrative costs outweigh the benefits of having thriving community members who have access to safe, stable housing and who want to invest in their community. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Andrew Hamrick.
Thank you to the council, and I do appreciate the opportunity to address you. The issues that came up since I was speaking earlier, as you consider where your landing spot's going to be on this, bear in mind the cost. The proposal in front of you is for a four point two percent rent increase on the eighty-eight percent of the units in the community that are not subsidized. If you took this same ratio to twenty percent of the units, that would be a six percent cost. You know, at, at some point, there's trade-offs to everything, and that's what you have to wrestle with. And for me, I, I would advocate to a community that needs more housing than anything that places an additional burden on building that housing is probably not the right tactic. But if you do decide to increase that percentage, there's a cost that goes along with it. But I also get the impression, and I realize you've been at work on this ordinance for some time, and that work predates the adoption of House Bill twenty-one eleven seventeen. But you'll need to take some time and review that statute, because by giving local governments like yourself the ability to impose an inclusionary zoning ordinance like this, you've also been mandated to take some pro-development steps, which, and you've got a menu of things. It's not a mandate that you do each and every one of them, but one of the items on that menu is density bonuses. But in order to tailor your ordinance to make it legal under the new statutory requirements, you do have to wrestle with those ideas. And again, the, the point I was trying to make when we got cut off earlier, and I think it's an important one, the funding source for your affordable housing under this ordinance is going to be entirely limited to the other members of the community. It takes away the participation from all your other tax base, which includes your, your, your most wealthy residents of the city. And that's what is so counterproductive with these types of arrangements, because you end up with a system where rent for the poor is being subsidized by the slightly less poor. And I just think as a matter of governance, that's a bad idea, whether you spread it around with sales tax or property taxes or something that hits a more progressive tax base and just simply focusing on those people that make more than eighty percent average monthly income, but something less than a hundred and twenty percent average monthly income is not the right public policy. Thanks for the time.
Thank you. Next up is Joshua Cooperman.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at two sixteen Griffith Street in Lewisville. I would like to express my support for the city taking some form of action to make more affordable housing in town. I'm not an expert at all in this area, so I don't know if this ordinance is the best way to go, but it seems like a reasonable idea. I'd like to build a little bit on some previous comments. In particular, I would like to suggest, if not in this first round, in subsequent rounds, that the city do something to basically right, right some historical wrongs, and in some sense, try to, you know, give back to populations that have been historically disadvantaged, particularly in housing. I think the city should do its part in righting those historical wrongs. And I think it would be nice if the city could coordinate with its new Equity Diversion and Inclusion Task Force on that kind of effort. It would also be quite interesting to work with the Historical Commission and with the museum to see specifically maybe what historically in Lewisville, in Lewisville's past, you know, how were, how were different populations treated, and are there specific populations which maybe we should favor when we are allocating these affordable units that I hope we build? Finally, I would just like to say that when the council later on in the year takes up these issues again, I would really highly recommend that the council consider, or reconsider rather, some of the zoning decisions that were made in the comprehensive plan, in particular in the special districts in town. I think it would be a great idea to allow residential development in those places. If you only are allowed to build commercial or industrial or retail in those places, you are never going to get a sustainable development in those places, because people will have to drive, basically, to get to them. And it would be much more sustainable if people could live there and visit the, the stores that we build there and could work right there where they're living. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Anne Marie Jensen.
Hi again. Thanks for allowing me to speak. I, I wanted to thank Councilmember Lipton for bringing up this section that allows the conversion of the rental units after thirty years. I think that's a good change that you brought up that I think will make the ordinance better, and I thank you for that. I also want to say, you know, you guys have talked a little bit tonight about affordable home ownership. Longmont has a program called the Middle Tier Program, where in their Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, they make some exceptions for builders who are building for sale housing for people between eighty-one and a hundred and twenty percent of area median income. And as a result of that program, they've got some housing in the works, for sale housing with no government support, you know, just completely market rate in the very lower end of what people can afford. So as you have your meeting in August, I would encourage you to look at that program. It was something supported by developers, and it has had really a good impact on the community, one that I think a lot of people didn't expect. So it's called the Middle Tier Housing Program in Longmont. And I want to just thank you for your time and attention to this, and again, reiterate that I think you should go higher than twelve percent. You know, you, you, just to be clear, you have already approved, you know, a twelve percent goal in twenty seventeen, when every community, you know, approved the resolution on the regional housing plan. You won't reach that goal with a twelve percent Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, as you clearly understand from this conversation tonight. But nationwide, the range of these ordinances is typically between ten and twenty percent. So you're really at the lower end of the percentage, and you are, you're going to be struggling. And so I encourage you to reach your goals. I encourage you to think broadly and, and try and go a little higher, at, at least fifteen, as Superior has, and then you can come back and figure out some of your additional tools in the toolbox. And we at the East County Housing Opportunity Coalition would like to help you, and if there's anything we can do, I'd be happy to, you know, try and support you in any way. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm not seeing any other members of the public that would care to comment on this agenda item this evening. So with that, we'll come back to council members for a discussion of the ordinance. Councilmember Lee?
Yes. Thanks to the public for being here tonight, making comments. It's very helpful, and, and a number of you, including Mr. Hamrick, I think, and Ms. Jensen and, and others as well have, I think Mr. Krantz Dorff also provided some material to, or emails to us in advance of this, and that's, that's very helpful. I, I think to Mr. Cooperman's point, he, he raises a, an important point around the Comprehensive Plan. That document is going to be revised in the next couple of years, and I hope that Echo and property owners and builders and developers and the public will be involved in, in what I hope to be, or hope is going to be a really, really robust discussion of what it means to be the community that we want to be in the future. Because as, as he points out, there are limitations that are suggested in the comp plan that I think are ones that we just need to look at in a very broad perspective. And to Ms. Jensen's point, which is good, where it's a heavy lift to get to twelve percent. We're not going to get to where we want to be with twenty percent either, unfortunately. I, I think the, the real bigger point that she's raising and others are raising is we have a lot of work to do on where we as a city are willing to put our money or our the incentives that we have to, to offer, which may not be money given to somebody but foregoing certain kinds of, of benefits in order to, to make sure we have more affordable housing. It's going to be something that's going to require not just burdens on others, but burdens on, on the city and our own larger group. And I think that was what Mr. Hamrick was talking about. I don't think that just because this particular measure doesn't spread itself, or the cost of it doesn't spread itself necessarily through the whole tax base, that it's not worth doing. It's one piece of it. It's not a huge piece, but it is one piece. The other pieces I think are going to have probably a lot more, the costs are going to be more widely dispersed effectively throughout the entire tax base. So recognize the point, but this is, it's not as big a, I think, as material an issue right now as, as some of the other issues are. So that's, that's what I wanted to say, and hopefully we can, you know, again, get back to the bigger issues come, come August. And I think it was suggested that that meeting be a direction, a regular meeting or a special meeting, if you will, so that we could give some really solid direction, and I'm looking forward to that, and I'd support that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thanks. So my first comment is around our EDI task force. I was, I was super disappointed when they set their priority list for the next several months that housing was not considered a high priority in what they're going to tackle over the next few months, because I, I certainly think that's an important topic for, for council and what we're doing, dealing with right now. But, um, you know, I do hope we can continue to work with that task force if we have questions, and we can send, even if it wasn't considered a high priority for them, if, if we can ask the question, I think that would be helpful. Some of you may, I may not know, my day job is I, I own Fox Property Management, which is a residential property management company. Some people think I'm a developer. I'm not. I help people manage their rental homes. And so I have a lot of experience in both the rental side and the investment rental properties and some of the mechanics that go into it. And one of the things that's really interesting, from an investor perspective, when someone buys a home, some people just turn their home into rental, that's one thing. But when someone buys a home to rent it, the math they're doing is, is trying to get to what we call cash flow neutral, which is to say that the rent will cover their mortgage, which is principal and interest, their HOA dues if they have them, their maintenance, the management fee they pay my company, that, that the rent will cover all of that. And so the reason I bring that up is that so many of our renters who can't afford to own a home can afford the mortgage, the HOA, the maintenance, and everything. They can afford the monthly payment. They just don't have the money to have the down payment to get into the home ownership. But it's not that they can't afford the monthly payments. And so I think a really important thing for us to, to, you know, endeavor into is, is down payment assistance or working with institutions for, you know, zero down mortgages, those kind of things that help people who can already afford the home they live in, but can't afford the home they live in. It's, it's some ways counterintuitive. Another thing is there are some new laws that have gone in place around Section Eight, and other potentially discriminatory practices by landlords. So when we, when we, what we call vet a tenant, their, their source of income is protected now. And so we'll tell an owner, hey, this person's qualified for your home. Like, great. And then we tell them, by the way, there's Section Eight. And so it's a little bit complicated. We have to do this whole paperwork. And I go, well, I don't, I don't want anyone with Section Eight. Oh, well, that's actually illegal. That's discriminatory, and you can't do that. And so that's another big thing that has happened over the last year is, is protecting people who are getting assistance to, again, this isn't big A affordable. This is affordable due to assistance, right? And so there's so many things that, that we can get involved with as, as a city. The city of Lewisville does not have a rental license. You do not have to have a license to rent your home out. So there's no inspection process. There is no guarantee of minimum standard, smoke alarms, handrails, those sorts of things. We don't have that. In, in the city of Boulder, we had to pass a rental license inspection. City of Lewisville, we don't. But again, to the complicated issue, when you have that, then people have to upgrade their homes and make them nicer, which makes them more expensive. And so one way to have an affordable home is to not take care of it and not have it be safe. And then it's affordable. And we don't want that. And so finding ways, which really is to my whole point, carrots and sticks, right? We're talking about a stick right now, which says twelve percent affordable housing if you want to build anything. And I think that's fine. And you're not going to get me to vote against additional affordable housing. I think it's incredibly important, and I'm not going to be the council member that votes against affordable housing. But that's a stick that's going to prevent affordable housing. It's going to prevent the construction of affordable housing. So we need to be prepared as a council for what are our carrots? If we want to create rental license in order to have a rental home, what's the, what's the carrot that makes that, you know, oh, well, if you actually have gone through the process X, right? Or if you rent to someone with Section Eight, why? Or if you give someone, you know, a lower down payment to buy the home, you get this, right? What are the tools that we can have? And, and the reason I bring all that up is because we, it's really important that we don't pat ourselves on the back for inclusionary zoning in and of itself. This is an important step, and I agree with all the residents, this is important. But if we think that we've done something by passing the zoning, or sorry, this in, in inclusionary housing, we're not there yet. I, I promise you, we're not there yet. Without higher density, without other incentives to create this, without really pushing as a community to say this is something we truly genuinely want, we're not going to get what we need. And, and again, to the math, twelve percent, even if everyone does it, is barely going to be a drop in the bucket. Forty-six, forty-six units in our entire city will be added if everyone complies and, and doesn't do fee and loo and, and builds out entirely. So I am in support of this. I think that the one constructive thing I can say for tonight, because everything else is about the future, so I apologize, the only constructive thing I can say about tonight is that I think we should at least match our neighbors with the fifteen percent rather than twelve percent. I'd be, again, willing to go to twenty. I just think, again, my problem is it's counterproductive. I think you just get no development. But I think one of the things that we notice with so many things we do is, well, if we do it in Lewisville, what is the behavior? If a developer sees that we're at twelve percent, do they skip town? And I say no, because Superior's fifteen, Boulder's twenty-five. We go to twelve, and they're not saying, well, I guess I'll go somewhere else. Maybe, but not nearby. But I say the same thing for fifteen percent. So if we say fifteen percent, I don't think developers go, well, then I'm leaving, leaving Lewisville because Superior X or Boulder Y, right? It's similar to those other ones and to what the, you know, one of our residents said, and I, I don't have your name down. I think it was Anne Marie. I think it was Anne Marie. We don't want to be at the bottom of this. We don't want to be at the lowest. So I would, I would recommend that we go to 15%, but that we then really work on our carrots.
So thank you, Councilmember Dickinson. And just to remind everybody, we're discussing whether or not to approve ordinance 1809. And so Councilmember Dickinson, I'll turn it back to you in just one second to ask you if you wanted to just sort of poll the group to see if they're interested in a friendly amendment or how you want to proceed with your, with your proposal, just to kind of take the temperature some way, or if you want to make a formal motion. But I do just want to say to the renters that were listening just now, if you are living, living in a home that's not Dakota, building inspector can come out and ensure that your, your home comes up to standards. So there are methods, a rental program would be fantastic. I'm not discounting that in any way, but if people are living in homes that don't meet building codes, there is a method to have that resolved in our community. So Councilmember Dickinson, did you want to just sort of take the temperature of the group around 15? Did you want to propose a friendly amendment? Did you want to make a substitute motion?
Um, thanks for all those options. Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would offer a friendly amendment that we, that we move forward with 15% to match Superior and, and see if anyone would, would second a 15% affordable housing.
Can, can folks kind of indicate, you know, through like a, you know, if they're neutral or thumbs up, just whether or not they would like me to accept that friendly amendment? I don't want the whole thing to be derailed over it. I, I said my support for 20 from the onset. I understood Mayor Proton Maloney's points well, that he thought we should go with the staff proposal and then talk about these kinds of amendments as we talked about further things in August. So that's why I left it alone. So I'm okay to go forward with whatever everyone's comfortable with. And I don't want this to derail the group's consensus where I feel like we are building good consensus to this point. I'm not seeing some of your faces. Okay, so it looks, it looks like this is a good topic for August. So we'll leave it where it is today, but we could talk about increasing the amount when we come back in August. That's one of the topic points, it sounds like. But maybe if we just leave it where it is for now, so I'll reject the friendly amendment. But thank you very much and look forward to that discussion. And I am, as I said, supportive of 20. So next in the queue is Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. You know, I just wanted to express my support for the ordinance. Really appreciate the thoughtful, the thoughtful work that went into developing this ordinance from Director Zakaro and his staff. You know, I realized that we're, we're, we're taking, if we approve this tonight, we're taking a small step. But it's a, it's a step, it's a small step in the right direction. And, you know, every, every journey has to start with one step. And I believe that's, that's really what we're, what we're doing here. And I'm really looking forward to having a more, you know, more robust discussion in August about some other potential options. I appreciate all of the members of our community who've expressed support for making affordable housing more available in our community. And, and quite frankly, for Louisville doing their part to do, to do this. So, you know, we, we are, anyway, so I, I think that's really important. I, I, as a little anecdote, I'll just mention that, you know, when my parents moved here in 1983, they bought their house for $70,000. And it was a, you know, it was a small, well, it was a starter home, but it worked, it worked for us and it worked for, for our family of four, for, for many years. That $70,000 house adjusted for inflation would now go for about $192,000. But we all know that that house in Louisville does not go for $192,000 now. It would go probably for $662,000. So if housing increased like other goods in this area, that, that house would still be affordable to a couple or to, to, to a family that made what my parents made at the time as a part-time teacher and a, you know, a, a student fresh out of, fresh out of grad school. But that is not the reality that we live in anymore. And we are now facing, you know, the potential for a real affordability crisis. And so I think, you know, I'm, I'm really happy that we're, we're potentially taking this step tonight. And I'm happy to, happy to support the, the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I want to add my thanks to the staff. Director Zakaro in particular, he's done a fabulous job putting this proposal together. I do also support the ordinance, the way it's been proposed with the anticipation that we're going to continue this discussion, perhaps add to this, perhaps add in some other way in August to our housing efforts. I like the idea of including, of increasing our inclusionary housing. I like the idea of supporting our EDI efforts. And I think this is, as former council, other council members have already said, a good first step. So thank you all.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask City Clerk Muth for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Maloney?
Yes.
Mayor Stolzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. It's 8:17. We'll take a five-minute break and then we will come back for the next agenda item. See you in five minutes.
We have laid out a couple of options for, for city council and a little bit of data. What we are seeing is that in general, the total delinquent accounts are not significantly higher than normal for this time of year. But the, the aging is starting to deteriorate or they're getting, you know, longer in duration. And this may make it more difficult for customers to get caught up. So we did want to point out that city utility customers who are unable to pay their utility bills have some utility bill assistance and support that the city provides in partnership with Sister Carmen. And we have a utility bill assistance fund that we have been replenishing throughout the year as more funding and assistance is needed. And we can continue to do that. You know, if, if you are to move forward with an ordinance to reinstate these provisions. And so we can come back to you. You could either decide to keep the ordinance in place until the disaster declaration is lifted, or we can come back to you with an ordinance that would repeal the provisions in emergency, emergency ordinance 1792, series 2020. The timeline for that would be that we would bring something back in, at the next meeting in July for first reading. And then we would do communication to utility customers over the course of two months, which would cover all of our utility customers, making sure they were all aware that those penalties and disconnection provisions would be back in place. And beginning in October 2021 billing period, they would go back into place. So that's really all I have. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. And so first ask members of the public if they would care to comment on this agenda item this evening. If you'd like to, go ahead and raise your hand using the raise hand icon at the bottom of page. Seeing no comment on this agenda item, Councilmember Brown, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. And Deputy City Manager, I really appreciate your brief there. I wanted, I had a question about the, the staff memo related to the number of accounts that are in, I don't know what the right term is, but are, I guess, late on their payments at this point. You know, it seemed, it seemed to, the, the memo seemed to indicate that there were a larger number currently than there have been in the past. 2019, there were something like 30. You know, last year there were maybe more than that. And now we're up to like 120. Am I remembering those numbers? First of all, am I remembering those numbers correctly?
Yeah, so, so we had in, as of, and, and I'll let Finance Director Watson chime in if he has additional information. But we, as of May 31st, 2021, we had 291 delinquent accounts. It's not significantly higher than May 2020. We had 260 accounts then. So the difference between 260 and May 2020 and 291 in 2021. And in April of the previous year, 2019, we had 225 accounts. So it is, we have seen an increase. That's not to say that, but it's not, you know, we don't characterize that as a significant increase. However, what we're seeing is that the, the duration of the delinquency is getting longer and longer, which means people are owing, will owe more and more money. And the longer we delay the delinquency, the more that will accrue over time.
So just to follow up, so what happens, we repeal this ordinance, maybe in a future meeting, or maybe tonight. What, what happens to these folks who are in delinquency at this point?
I'll let Director Watson explain the exact process about how we sort of direct them to utility bill assistance and work with them on payment repayment of any of their delinquencies.
And, and just before Director Watson chimes in to explain what happens when there's a delinquent payment, Councilmember Brown, tonight, we won't be repealing the ordinance. We'll give direction to staff to come back. And so the, the soonest it could be repealed in any circumstance is October, so that we have the public comment period, so that the public understands what will be happening. So if we do nothing, it'll be sometime much after that. But the very soonest it would be repealed is October. I just wanted to clarify that for everyone.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Sorry about that.
No problem. Director Watson, if you would just tell us what happens when there's, you know, a, a, an account that's in arrears and hasn't made payment?
Okay, yes, just in general, when the billing goes out, it's due in 30 days. 30 days after that, or 60 days from the billing, if accounts deemed delinquent, it's charged a $5 penalty and interest at 1% on the delinquent balance. If, and then if that's not paid the next day or two, they are given a red tag where the Ops Department, Public Works Department goes out and puts a red tag on their door indicating that their water will be shut off if they don't pay their bill. And then two weeks later, if the bill is still outstanding, they go out and terminate water service. Now, as, as the mayor said, if, if we come back with an ordinance to restate all of our collection procedures, to continue those as, as we have in the past, we won't do anything until the October billing. And in the meantime, what we'll do is we'll start putting notices on the bottom of the bills that these are coming up. We have payment plans that we can put in place. We can have Sister Carmen that assists with these. You know, so we have various ways that, that, that we can help people get, get caught up. But eventually, you know, we will, we will be for, they will be, they will need to pay.
So, so yeah, thank you, Director Watson. I appreciate that. I guess my, my fear is that this ordinance goes into place and we have, you know, 300 red notes going up on people's doors all across the city. My hope is that we will work with folks, you know, and, and it sounds like we're in the business of doing that. My hope is that we will work with folks, you know, and and it sounds like we're in the business of doing that. But, you know, I I think it's it's it is always difficult to sort of untangle these these types of programs. Or, you know, move back in the other direction, but I guess I would, I would really encourage us as we're thinking about this to to you know, not have a rash of of shutting off of people's water, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Councilperson Brown, for some of those clarifying questions. You know, as I've looked at this, we initially passed this March thirty-first of twenty twenty, before we had some of these programs in place for assistance. So I went through Sister Carmen and then the one through S C C C. Didn't exist when we passed this. We do know how now have programs in place. There is help available. And the clarifying questions from Councilperson Brown about what we'll do as far as the billing and everything. I think we're in the position to transition back to the normal process. So I don't know if we're making a motion here or not. So I would make a motion that we would go with option number two. That we repeal the emergency ordinance and go back to normal processing, starting with the October billing.
Thank you, sir. Second. Second, thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. Any discussion of the motion?
Well, thank you.
Any discussion from any other council members of the motion? Councilmember Dickinson?
Question, do we know what the total delinquent amount is? You know, three hundred people. You're talking about thirty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars or?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me. I can, I can get back to you on that number. I can give you an email tomorrow.
When the, how about Director Watson, when the, since we'll have to have an ordinance come back in July for us to give this direction, how about we have that figure when we come back in July? Does that work for everybody? This has to come back to us. Councilmember Dickinson, did you have other questions?
No, I just would say I'm not in a in a hurry. Thank you for all the clarification. The quadruple negative was getting me the repealing of the suspension of the non-payment. I was trying, so I'm glad I know what we're talking about, but I'm not in a in a hurry to repeal this suspension.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes, thank you. I would make the comment that if we actually do or when we do repeal this, that we make it very well advertised so that anyone who's even close to being behind on their payments have a lot of time to make up that money and so that they don't get that red flag on their door.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahy. I think that's a great reminder, and it sounds like that's what staff's plan was, was to have a really good outreach campaign where they'd ensure everybody knew it was coming, so we didn't just start the program again. So that's a great reminder. And also to really advertise our programs, like Sister Carmen and our payment plan program. So people know if they're current on their payment plan, they won't have their water shut off as long as they're working with us. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah. I appreciate the arguments that have been made to reporting against and anticipate more. I I tend to believe, just as a very basic premise, we we have, you know, we provide a service and we charge for it. We charge what we believe is a fair amount for the service. We've had a horrible pandemic, obviously. And it's important to provide something of a safety net. You know, I proposed that fund initially some years ago, and we are using that, I think, in the right way to help people who are still having trouble. But we're coming out of this slowly but surely out of this pandemic, and I think it's perfectly appropriate to to move beyond having this emergency ordinance, as long as we've got a good, solid staff policy, which they've described about how we're going about the negotiations with people, and we've got a way to help them out if they're truly in a position where they're where they can't pay. We obviously don't want people to be shut off. If if it means that that they have to choose between food and water, that is obviously not something we want, but I think we've got the safety net in place. So I, that's what I I would agree.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, thanks. And Councilmember, I appreciate those comments. I wanted to ask one more question of the Deputy City Manager. What is the recent? What is what is the recent uptake of our, you know, we we gave our the fifty thousand dollars to Sister Carmen to help folks pay their pay their bills and I wondered to know sort of, has that fund been depleted? Do we need to to re-up that in some way, especially with this particular, if we're ending this ordinance? You know, and people are are maybe really looking for for additional help. Do we, is that direction that we need to be giving to staff as well?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Brown. I really appreciate that question, and we actually have been working closely with Sister Carmen, and we had planned to extend their funding, the second half of their funding. I think it was by the end of June, and we actually did that earlier. We ended up doing that. I think it was around the end of April because they had expended the first twenty-five thousand of the fifty thousand. So we have now extended the additional twenty-five thousand to them and asked them to keep us apprised of how those funds are being spent and to let us know when they need additional funding. We also know that with the American Recovery Plan Act funding, there has been a surge of additional funding that's coming to nonprofits as well as to the county to provide assistance. And so in our conversations with Sister Carmen, we we think that, you know, they may get some of those dollars, and that may delay a need for us to put additional funding into that fund. But I would just, I would just add to some of the comments that I've that we've heard. Just to reiterate, I I think there is some benefit also to notifying folks who are behind on their utility bills because they may be having other challenges and issues. And we're by directing them to a comprehensive service provider, they can help if, for example, their what their internet has been shut off and they need Wi-Fi for work. And so it gives a chance to help connect them to all of those safety net services.
Yeah, I really appreciate that, and I think I think that's what Councilmember Lay was getting at. Councilmember Fahy has said some things. I I I would very much support a real comprehensive plan where we're letting folks know if you're at all behind. You know, that to that was Councilmember Fahy's point. I and and I really hope that as soon as Sister Carmen indicates that that fund has been depleted or getting close, that that you will, that we will be alerted and we will be able to to make a decision about continuing those funds. I wouldn't want anybody to be to to have their water shut off and to to Councilmember Lay's point, have to choose between eating and having water. So thank you.
All right, so there's a motion on the table to give staff direction to bring us back an ordinance in July. So it's option number two. Is there any question about what we're voting on? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Thank you. The motion carries. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is Resolution number forty-two, series twenty twenty-one. A resolution amending the twenty twenty-one budget by amending appropriations in the General Fund, Open Space and Parks Fund, Cemetery Fund, Historic Preservation Fund, Recreation Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Rec Center Construction Fund, Water Utility Fund, Wastewater Utility Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund, Solid Waste and Recycling Fund, and Golf Course Fund for carryforward appropriations and additional appropriations within such funds and adjusting adjusted revenue in the General Fund, Open Space and Parks Fund, Capital Projects Fund, Water Utility Fund, and Golf Fund, Golf Course Fund. This is our public hearing, as advertised in the Daily Camera on June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and I'll open the public hearing and ask if there are any disclosures of council members. Seeing then, we'll turn it over to City Manager Balsor to turn it over to whoever she would like to for a staff presentation.
Yeah, I'm just gonna turn it over to Kevin, the Finance Director.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to try and share a really brief PowerPoint. Does that, can you see that?
Yes, we sure can, and it's full screen. Looks great.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, so this is just a really brief PowerPoint presentation that summarizes the proposed amendment. It gives a quick overview of the presentation format. Sometimes we have some questions on that, so I just want to make sure everybody understands the various ways the amendment is being presented tonight. So first of all, there are five general reasons or objectives for the proposed amendment. The first is to carry forward unused appropriations, in other words, to rebudget projects in twenty twenty-one that were budgeted in twenty twenty but not spent or completed. Second objective is to simply increase the twenty twenty-one expenditure budgets by adding new items or new funding to existing items. In some cases, projects that are being carried over are also receiving new funding. I'll talk just a little bit more about that in a minute. The third objective is to adjust the appropriation for staffing changes. We've had a lot of staffing changes since the original twenty twenty-one budget was adopted last November. The fourth objective is to adjust appropriations for the implementation of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one market wage survey. This is a survey that H R does, and it's typically implemented at the beginning of the year. But this was delayed in twenty twenty-one due to the financial uncertainty surrounding the pandemic. And this amendment proposes to implement that mid-year. The fifth objective and the final objective is to adjust the revenue budget for us for a few things. First of all, for delayed project revenue, whenever we carry forward, like a large capital project that's grant funded, we also need to carry forward that revenue, and so we're doing that tonight. We're proposing to budget for the anticipated receipt of A R P A funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We're also proposing to set a budget for the anticipated sale of water rights. And then there's some updated revenue projections that we received for the golf course, so we thought we'd go ahead and put those in here also. Normally, at this time, we bring forth a lot of revenue adjustments for sales tax, use tax, franchise fees, other grants, other small grants, those types of things. However, this year, the projections, as we talked about within the Finance Committee meeting, have been more difficult and more complex than normal. So we've chosen to wait for these, for some additional actual receipts, like for sales tax. Excuse me, and we'll present this at the budget retreat when we have a little bit more information and we feel more comfortable with the revenue projection. So the bottom line is more work is needed on the revenue adjustments. Just a quick overview of the presentation, just so everybody understands what we're presenting, because we're presenting this budget amendment in various ways. The council communication contains staff narratives, and those are divided into four sections. The General Department narrative, start on page five seventy-five of your packet, and that actually consolidates all the carryforward amendments and the new appropriation amendments into one item. So in other words, if a project has both a carryforward request and a new funding request, we've consolidated that into one line, and the departments have given one narrative on that. I want to make sure that's understood. The second section of the narratives is regards to staffing changes. That's on page five eighty-six. We provide a brief staffing or a brief narrative on all the position changes that have occurred since the original budget adoption. Page five eighty-eight provides a general narrative, just a paragraph on the market wage survey that we're proposing. And then beginning on page five eighty-nine, we have some narratives on those revenue adjustments that I've talked about. The formal resolution begins on page five ninety-two of your packet. The body of the resolution presents the amendments by fund, which is the city's legal level of budgetary control, so we have to do it that way. This and this presentation represents the least level of detail. However, the appendices to the resolution provide the budget amendment by account number. And this is, this presentation provides the greatest level of detail. So if you're looking for that amount of detail, that's where you want to look to on this amendment and that and the resolution, like I said, begins on page five ninety-two. The there's five appendices as as shown in the slide here. I guess the only thing I would like to caution you of is when reviewing these appendices, please note that the presentation of the carryforward and the new funding are split between A and B. Like I said, these are combined on your council communication, but when you look at the appendices to the resolution, they're split between A and B. If there's an account that's in both of these appendices, it is noted. And that's pretty much it. We've included a preliminary look at, based upon if you approve the resolution or the budget amendment as presented. We've we've included a twenty twenty-one estimate of revenue expenditures and changes to fund balance for all the funds. So this is a preliminary look at it, and we'll have a more updated, more comprehensive look again at all this, depending on depending on the budget resolutions and the revenue projections at the upcoming budget retreat. So that's the end of my formal presentation tonight. We happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I I think all the department directors are also here to answer any of your questions on some specific, if you have, on specific projects.
Thank you so much for that presentation, and that'll take us to our public comment period on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing then, that takes us over to council questions, comments, motions. Councilmember Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Kevin Watson and all the staff and the City Manager for the work on this. You know, it's, I guess, from a layman's perspective, this is a very confusing process. There's a lot of numbers flying back and forth, but, you know, this is an important budgetary and accounting stuff. And then also a way of sort of auditing what's what's going on. So I really appreciate all the work that goes into this. And, you know, it's important that we understand what what these concepts are, especially the appropriation piece. The last sort of item that Director Watson talked about was the revenue projections, and that's something that, you know, we talked about at the Finance Committee, and we basically all agreed it's very difficult to project what's going to happen the rest of the year with things like sales tax and various sectors. You know, and how things will rebound, whether it be use tax or hospitality taxes or whatever it might be. So that's a very difficult one, and we don't really have a solid handle on how to do that yet, and so that's why what we have right now is we we were cautious of trying to do that, you know, moving ahead here. But there's a few points that I'd like to make, you know, with this, and, you know, it's something that Councilor Lipton has mentioned, you know, over the years that I've been on council is, are we are we right sizing the commitment for projects? You know, one of the things we see with these carryforwards, and some of these are fairly significant, are ones that we move projects forward over time, and do we really have? Are we creating more expectation than what can be accomplished and that really can be accomplished? So that's a, that's a question out there. I do believe part of it is also is the accounting aspect of when a project gets completed and when we pay it. Until we finally, and in using the vernacular with this particular methodology we're using, we're doing some carryforwards on things where projects are essentially complete, but we haven't made the final payment. You know, and and I appreciate where, you know, staff is at with some of these projects, until we go through the punch list and and so forth, that project is not complete. And so then we start carrying forward these appropriations. That's just a methodology we have to understand. I I do believe there's a few things that that need to be tweaked with this, not with the this accounting process, but certainly the way we account for or look at some of these capital project. And one is, I call, evolution of scope. Some people call that, you know, scope creep, but you know, we have some that start off in a certain direction. you know, whether it be EV charging stations and so forth, and it's approved for certain locations, and then later it gets moved. You know, it's still within the same vein, but is that still the same request? And that's just, I'm just throwing some things out there to consider as we go through this the next time. And then these multi-year projects, or projects where the completion date, it's essentially complete in a fiscal year, but doesn't get closed out till the next fiscal year. And so we're doing some of these carry-forwards, and so that's why I believe some of them are, seem fairly large. But overall, I really appreciate the work done by Director Watson and the finance staff. I think what you have before you here is very, very solid information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Prokan Maloney. I agree wholeheartedly with your points. Are there other folks just looking for hands? I guess the only, while people are thinking about what they'd like to raise, there is one that I'm struggling with, which is the rec center construction. And I just would like to thank staff for the tremendous effort that goes into this. And I sent forward most of my questions. Some of them, you know, these are follow-on questions. But I sent in several pages when this was at Finance Committee, and really am very thankful to staff for answering those questions and addressing the issues that I had. But the one that remains is the rec center construction, the 214,000. It just seems like this is really different than the way we normally do things, because this is a list of projects, and including in the, in the list is "and more", like it's just sort of an open-ended, like this is for a list of projects and more. And so it just doesn't seem like that's how we typically budget for capital projects. Like we typically have discrete programs and projects and then approve them or not. And then I also have heard concerns recently around the property tax burden on our residents. So I wonder if this money could be paid, just spent to pay down the principal on the bonds rather than this, and just what the trade-offs are. So I just, this seems to be outside the normal process. I wonder if we should carve this one out and take it up in the budget process when we do the budget later in the year.
Yeah, I can address that briefly. I think you, you definitely isolated the two options that we have. This is leftover bond fund money, or actually it's leftover, it could be, you know, you could say the bond money was first in, so it's first out, we did some transfers. Anyway, this is the leftover money that's sitting in the Recreation Center Construction Fund. We have two options, as you mentioned, is we can pull that out and we can pay off debt, the debt on it, we can put it in the Debt Service Fund. Or we have to, it's restricted specifically for improvements to the recreation centers. So we have chosen to, this is the final remaining amount to end the fund, to, you know, to spend everything. And we've, we're proposing at this point that we would spend that on some of the value engineered details that we did when we constructed the rec center. But we can surely pull that out and discuss that further later down the road. That's very easy to do.
It just, the reason I bring that up, really, it was really not intended to have staff to have to answer it more in council discussion, that we had some projects in our capital projects fund that we funded and then had to take out for COVID, but like things like the rope at Memory Square, and the climbing wall in the pool, and some other improvements that don't seem to be listed here. And then other different improvements are listed here. It just seems to be outside the normal process. So I thought it was worth at least talking about. Councilmember Lipton.
I think, you know, perhaps another option is to use that remaining money for energy conservation improvements of the building that, you know, might have gotten value engineered out, or perhaps just things we should be doing. Is this one of the buildings we're doing the energy audit on? I can't recall if it was in the list. Certainly, if it's in the list, we'll have a list of things we can invest in to make it even more energy efficient than it is now.
So Councilmember Lipton, would, would you be okay with just, I think deciding what we're going to do with it tonight seems like we probably, that's probably not the best thing. I mean, I'm all on board with what you just proposed, but if we put this in the rest of the budget process and have a little bit more discussion around it, is that okay?
Oh, no, that's fine. I think you outlined two options. I just want to throw a third one out for, and so for staff to think about before it comes back to us. Thanks.
Any other discussion on that topic or other topics? Any other questions or comments or motions? Mayor Prokan Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 42, Series 2021.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Could I make a friendly amendment to just remove from the motion item number 303120-62106, rec center construction, which is the $214,000? And just, we'll just leave that out of this and then have the discussion in the budget later in the year.
Accepted.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion or questions or comments? All right, City Clerk Muth, could we please have a roll call vote?
Would you like to close the public hearing?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I'll close the public hearing. And now the last City Clerk, if we could have a roll call vote.
Mayor Stolman?
Yes.
Mayor Prokan Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. I need a gavel. That would help me. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our city attorney's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. That takes us to our council comments committee reports and identification of future agenda items. Economic Vitality Committee?
No report.
Finance?
Just one quick thing. One of the items that we've been working on is some orientation things for the Finance Committee, and one of the things we talked about was the reserve policy. And we are going to be addressing the reserve policy for the general fund in one of the upcoming meetings. Right now, we have a 15% minimum and a 20% target. In our discussions yesterday, we decided we probably need to be thinking about the target potentially being greater to account for some other things, such as open space purchases, rainy day fund and things like that. So just a heads up, that's one of the things we'll be taking on and with our intention of coming forward to the rest of council with some ideas around that for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Utility Committee?
No report.
CC4CEA, Colorado Communities for Climate Action?
Just very shortly, the council, the, the whole session just ended, and they've supported many, many bills related to climate that have passed. And I think the two that I just pointed out for us that will affect us probably the most is Senate Bill 260 is the transportation tax, or bill that passed. And the other is 1162, the House Bill 1162, which is the plastic products. And so that's going to impact how we implement our use, single-use bag tax. So those are the two biggies.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Commuting Solutions?
No report.
Clumsome of City?
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. I actually, because of a family emergency, was absent from the last meeting. But I understand that the, the, we discussed affordable housing, as it were, in, in Boulder County. And I also just wanted to give a shout out to the legislature. I know that as part of our legislative priorities, and we, we in, in Lewisville supported affordable quality health insurance. And we did a lot, the legislature did a lot this year on affordable quality health insurance, including passing what we're referring to as a Colorado option. So just wanted to make everyone listening tonight aware of that. And, and by 2023, that should be available in all parts of Colorado.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and thank you for your work on that. Downtown Business Association, Street Fair?
No report.
Denver Regional Council of Governments, we are allocating the 5310 funds associated with the CHRSA and the ARPA funds. Interestingly, the Denver Aurora region is allocated through Dr. Cog, but the Boulder region is allocated directly by the state. So CDOT gets to decide on those projects instead of the group down at Dr. Cog, so just fun fact. And we're also taking up some other tip amendments. And so they're typically like administrative-type modifications. They're not large amendments to the tip. So I think that they will likely pass tomorrow. Joint Interest Committee, Superior and Lafayette?
No report.
Metro Mayor's Caucus, we talked about street racing, and Clint Folsom and I also met with our chief and the sheriff and some other law enforcement agents from the state around the street racing issues. So it just continues to be a problem, and it moves around. And it's really fascinating to see how all of the different agencies are working together on it. And if we can all get the word out that the, the state is monitoring it by air, and just because that you don't see high-speed racers going around after folks that night, it doesn't mean they're not following up with people after the fact, because a high-speed car chase wouldn't be safe, of course. So they're monitoring things, you know, taking down information and then following up with individuals after the fact. And if people do see something, it seems, you know, they get frustrated because they don't necessarily see the cavalry coming out, lights ablazing, but it's still worth reporting it. You can call our non-emergency number or our non-emergency dispatch number, or there's actually an online form that is just for street racing, so you can fill that form out and turn folks in that way if you see gatherings or the racing happening. So please do report it. Northwest Mayor's and Commissioners Coalition, we talked about the RTD Accountability Report, the final report, and gave some feedback, the way that they had worked it around fast tracks wasn't very favorable to our communities. And so we gave some feedback around that and hoping that they would look at more broad options on how to complete fast tracks. We also, I got a letter from Marty Loachman, County Commissioner Loachman, and hoping to meet with me around the American Recovery Act funds and the other mayors from the other cities. So I'll keep everybody posted on that. I think the county's looking for input on ways they could spend their funds as well as possible options for collaboration. But I do know most of the communities have had costs in excess of their typical revenues. So really, the funds are just backfilling gap. And so, you know, I'm not sure how extensive we'll be able to use those funds to participate, but we certainly want to give input and be at the table and find out what they want to talk about. So they're going to, my understanding is they're inviting the mayors and hiring a facilitator and inviting the community foundation to that discussion to just sort of talk about, you know, how we might use these funds. And, you know, the county, being that they have property taxes, their major source of revenue, may have been impacted differently over the last year than our communities were. So maybe they're in a different position, and so I will report out on how that goes. It's not exactly through the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, but I believe they've just invited all the mayors from that group. So I'll keep you posted on that. Revitalization Commission?
Well, the Revitalization Commission is meeting tomorrow to talk about a few issues relating to the potential measure that we're, we may send to the voters this fall, and you're all welcome to that. But that's the main thing up on the calendar for us.
Thank you. Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Roundtable?
Yes, we met on Monday, and one of the things that came out of that meeting is we found out that Rocky Mountain Airport is having their consultants have a community open house to solicit input from the various communities and people related to future, future expansions of the airport. And I have to say, the community engagement on this has been fairly weak. I mean, not even the members of the roundtable knew this was going to have, happen on next Monday. It's next Monday. I believe it starts at 5:00. So I want to thank Emily for helping get out the word on the various listservs and, you know, communications options that we have. And I think Boulder County has done the same on their end. And really would like to encourage everybody, everyone to call in, it's virtual, and let the consultants know what your thoughts are on future expansions and redevelopment at the airport. Thanks.
Thank you. Excel Energy Futures?
No report.
Any folks have items for the advanced agenda? Mayor Prokan Maloney?
Just to reiterate, we have the, let's see, affordable housing study session was scheduled for the 24th. We need to make sure that we prove that it's a special session. And then with the announcement by the city manager, we'll probably, we'll be needing to put other things on the calendar during the course of this year as we do the setting expectations for the new city manager and recruitment processes. Thank you.
Thank you, and so we'll bring those back for a future advanced agenda. Councilmember Fahey?
Yes, with no emergency timing on this, I would like to have some kind of discussion, at least a study session, discussing how we're going to deal with public proclamations and, for example, the flags for, for pride. And now there's requests for United States flags for Fourth of July week. And so I think we should have a discussion about what the procedure will be for deciding what proclamations we're going to make and how we're going to support all these different causes. They're all wonderful causes that we do want to support, but how we're going to do that and when? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. So would you like to bring that forward next year in the work plan discussion? Or would you like to put that on deck somewhere on the advanced agenda, and how does the group feel about that?
I think probably putting it on the work plan would be a good idea.
Okay, that, that would be great. Thank you, Councilmember Fahey. Councilmember Lay?
I add two things. One is that I hope that at some point here, I expect that the community and council and staff will have an opportunity to recognize the city manager for the work that she's done before she leaves. And we appreciate the help that she's already expressed, I think, in assuring a very stable and solid transition, and that's a good thing. I don't want to lose sight of that. I think the second thing is perhaps just a, an added thought on what Councilmember Fahey mentioned. I've been thinking about this a lot, as some of you know, about this whole issue. And the mayor and I have had a nice discussion over years now, I think we have, about what we do about kind of controversial or really city's speech that, you know, is beyond what we necessarily do in the meetings, the topics that come up. And, I mean, we've talked about this, gosh, Mayor, I'm trying to find that one discussion that we, that I, I talked about kind of a framework in which we might think about doing this. But I, I think that I would say it would be a good idea to have a process for, for how we make those decisions as a council, because it is really challenging. You know, on the one hand, we do get a lot of requests, and, you know, when somebody has a request to use memory square park for something, we have a way of managing that. We've had requests now for flag issues, raising certain flags and so forth. Seems to me we, we can, without as much, I guess, brain damage as all that, try to reach some consensus around that. I, I would prefer not to wait until the work plan. I know that there are many, you know, we've got a lot of things on our plate, a lot, and I recognize that. But I think we're going to get more requests, and it just would be nice to have a way of kind of working the traffic. I was going to actually suggest something, which is I have started noodling just a little thought piece, which
have started noodling just a little thought piece, which isn't something that necessarily lays out a lot of answers, but actually asks some of the questions that might help to frame a discussion like that. And so I would prefer to put it on the advanced agenda. I don't know where we put it on that. I know that we've got plenty to do. But I'd like to take this up, or at least encourage council to take it up before the work plan next year.
So we can't have a substantive debate on this topic tonight as it's not on the agenda. So I just ask if we could have a vote on whether or not people want to put this on the advanced agenda at this time, or if they'd rather put it on the work plan. So Councilmember Lay has made a proposal to put it on the advanced agenda at this time.
I would agree with that. I think we need to do it sooner than later.
Can I just see a show of supportive? I mean, one, two, three, four. All right, we have, we have a majority that wants to put it on the agenda. And I just ask that when we bring it forward, we include things like the business signs in downtown. Businesses were denied the right to have their signs up. There's many other topics. This is an expansive, huge topic. So look forward to seeing this coming forward. Any other advanced agenda items?
So, so Mayor, this is Heather. I'd just say that we, yeah, so we'll look at the advanced agenda and try to figure out scope for that conversation and when that fits into the advanced agenda.
Thank you, City Manager Boss. Any other advanced agenda topics? All right. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.